Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us today as the National Board of Public Health Examiners presents the first in our series of six webinars geared towards explaining the Certified in Public Health (CPH) credential and to help you prepare for the upcoming exam. Each session will be two and a half to three hours long and include a presentation, lecture, and interactive segments. A break will be offered midway through the presentation. This presentation will be archived on the MBPHE website. You may register for remaining sessions on the MBPHE website. Today's session is Epidemiology. We are pleased to have Dr. Paul Terry, Associate Professor at the University of Tennessee Department of Public Health and Surgery, present for us today. Thank you and welcome, Dr. Terry.
Thank you very much. I'm here in Tennessee, in Knoxville. The moderators are in Washington DC, so we're all over the country right now. And I welcome you to this session. There's a lot of slides. I think there's a little bit over 200 slides. For some of you, it may be going at a pretty reasonable pace. For others, I think you might find that we're covering a lot of territory in a relatively short amount of time. In some ways, three hours while it seems like a long time is not for this amount of material. So I strongly recommend that you go over these slides again and ask any questions along the way. If I see a question, I'll try to answer it. If I don't get to it right away, I will definitely get to it at some point. Your questions can come after the webinar at any time. My contact information will be available. It's at the end of the slide presentation. And I don't mind anybody writing to me with questions or calling. It makes no difference. I'm happy to help you if I can. So today's topic is epidemiology. And if I have control of this, I should be, yes. What we're going to do is review some of the basic topics covered in the epidemiology section of the exam. Of course, like I just said, the materials covered cannot replace a basic epidemiology course, which in our school is 15 weeks. And we're not really going to cover 15 weeks' worth of material here. The review will be archived, though, on the MBPHE website under Study Resources. And again, it's there. I think you can download it. I think you can review it again and ask questions anytime. If you're interested in a textbook, there are many that, you know, you probably have one. Some of the students in our program like Leon Gordis' textbook, Epidemiology textbook, and they're on the fifth edition now. But some of the earlier editions are less expensive and really just as good. So, you know, that's just one recommendation for you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the definition of epidemiology and some of the terminology that you may already know. Measures of disease frequency. Then we'll get into the study designs and talk a little bit about causation versus association and screening for disease. So let's begin with the definition of epidemiology. Now, there's no one definition of epidemiology. There's probably 30 out there that are commonly used in courses. But they all boil down to essentially, it's the study of the distribution and determinants of either disease, if you want to use a simple term, or, if you want to be more accurate, health-related states or events in specified populations and the application of this study to control health problems. So distribution is the first part of the definition, and it's a very important part of what we do. We're looking at disease distribution and some of the questions that we want to know about disease. If you think about it, if this is the first time you were investigating a disease or a health-related state or condition, I think I'm going to use disease more often than the other term. How common is it? Who is affected? When does it occur? Where does it occur? And I'll just give you a few examples of each, starting with how common is it? So some basic terms first. Epidemic, endemic, sorry. Starting with endemic. Usual presence of a disease within a given population. So if a particular disease is said to be endemic in a certain area, that means that it's present and it's been present for a while. This is the expected amount of disease in that population. And it's usually interpreted as being a substantial amount of disease. It's there, it's present. Epidemic, though, is an unexpected occurrence of a disease clearly in excess of normal expectancy in a defined community or region. You know, at some point, an epidemic can become endemic, and I can't tell you exactly where that point is. For example, people say there's an epidemic of obesity in the United States, but at some point, people might start saying it's endemic. Obesity is endemic in the United States. Pandemic is a worldwide epidemic. And if you think of AIDS, you know, a few decades ago, that's an example of a worldwide epidemic, where there was epidemics of HIV-positive people around the world. So rare disease has different definitions. Remember that it's time-dependent, because some diseases are common in certain time periods and not common in other time periods. And certain diseases are common, or conditions or health-related states are common in one area and not in the others. Like a bubonic plague, you might consider to be a rare disease, but there's a few counties in New Mexico a few years ago where they might disagree with that. So just remember that rare is a relative term. Who was affected? Who's affected by disease? Some personal characteristics are listed here, but these are just a few of the many. And of course, there's also personal susceptibility, as you know, that could be related to your genes and your constitution and your health, you know, your health status, even nutritional Now, basically, you may have heard of closed versus open populations, or sometimes called dynamic. It does make some difference in minutia of doing calculations, but it's more important for now just to understand the different terms. Populations with a permanent membership is referred to as fixed or closed. For example, people present in Hiroshima when the bomb went off in 1945. That's closed, because nobody else can join that and nobody can leave that group of people. However, the population of your city is a dynamic or open one. People come and people go. The overall population size may remain the same, you know, approximately 250,000 in our area, for example. But it is dynamic, and it's important to understand that some differences in implication between a closed and open cohort or group. But for now, it's just good to know what they mean. So let's talk about when disease occurs. Now, this is an example of annual plague deaths in London over time. It also illustrates the point I made about rare. Rare is a relative term here. But you do get to see epidemics, don't you? You get to see what epidemics look like. Plague was not endemic in any way. It was epidemic. Understanding when something occurs, like why did these things occur at this point in You know, it's important. Right now, we're looking at people who don't want to get vaccinated or have their children vaccinated for certain diseases. One day, you may see a blip like this. Historically, people maybe look back on our time and see that there's a blip of measles or something like that. And they could link it to the fact that people were not getting vaccines. They were afraid to get vaccinated. So that's an example of when does it occur? And how about where does it occur? Of course, you probably know the famous study by John Snow. And he looked at where the cholera occurred, ultimately relative to where the water supply was. And that was a very important investigation. And probably the best example of where does it occur? But there's certainly other examples out there. So we're going to go to measures now. Measures of morbidity. You'll find that when we get to measures of mortality, it's really the same thing. But for now, we're talking about disease risk. Death also deals with many of the same measures as the occurrence of disease. So be aware that they're very similar. So four simple mathematical parameters that we're going to go over quickly. Counts, ratios, proportions, and rates. And I'll get to your questions soon. I'll take a look at the question board very soon. I'm just going to get through a few more slides. So count, the most basic epidemiologic measure, expresses as integers. I mean, there's a count, how many people are on this webinar. That's a basic count. Answers the question, how many people have this condition? Important to distinguish between incident and prevalent cases. Incident is new cases. It's very important, actually, because we'll be talking about later study design, and they have different implications. Existing cases of a disease or condition and new cases. It has a real implication for study design, so let's keep that in mind. Here's an example of a count. Deaths in the United States during the 20th century. And as you see, from 1900, oh, it's per thousand. But as time goes on over the century, you see the count going up. You see the count going up, year by year. But obviously, there's something missing. I hope you understand what that is. Counts are important, but by themselves, there's usually something missing. In this case, you probably know what it is. It's the denominator. I mean, it looks like it's getting more dangerous to live in the United States, but in fact, the number of people who lived in the United States, which is the denominator, increased even more. So it's actually safer to live in the United States, despite the fact that the actual count is getting larger. A ratio. A ratio. One number divided by another. And of course, you can have zero. If it's zero divided by a number, it's going to be zero. Or if it's any number divided by zero, it's going to be infinity. So that's the range of a ratio. And X and Y may be related or completely different. For example, the ratio in a classroom, for example, females to males, that's a ratio. They're different, females and males, in the sense that they're not the same. And we're looking at the ratio. It could be high, it could be low. Maybe the only point to make here is that if the number in the numerator and the denominator are the same, the ratio is going to be one. And that comes in later when we look at measures of association. Now, here you're going to see that I've changed it a little bit. Before, it was females to males. Now, it's females to everybody. Females to everybody in the class. Now, suddenly, it's a proportion. It's a different measure. Well, it's a ratio, but it's different, and we'll talk about that. Now, proportion is a ratio in which the numerator is included in the denominator. So females to everybody, the females are part of everybody. So that's what we mean by ratios in numerator, ratio in which the numerator is included in the denominator. And now, it's not zero to infinity, it's zero to one. Think about it. If everybody in the class is female, divided by everybody in the class, females divided by everybody, now the highest number you can get is one. And now, we talk about a percentage. A proportion can be expressed as a percentage, zero to one, or 0% to 100%. So here's an example of a ratio, where we're dividing stillbirths to live births in a hospital, in a local hospital. And in this case, we have 20 stillbirths for every 1,000 live births. Now, is that a proportion? No, because stillbirths are not included in live births. How would you make it a proportion? Well, you would add the stillbirths to the live births in the denominator, and then you'd have 2550 total births. So 50 stillbirths divided by 2550 total births would give you a proportion. And here's an example of that. Now, you have the stillbirths are included in the total births, and we have a number when we divide, 0.0196. To get a percent, we multiply by 100, and we have 1.96% stillbirths in this group of all births. So that's a proportion. And when it comes to disease or health-related conditions, we use the term risk. There's a type of proportion, risk. What's the risk of stillbirth in this group of people? So we're going to come back to the term risk, but this is the context in which it's normally used in epidemiology. So now, rate. I can't tell you how many times the word rate is used when they actually mean risk or proportion. Maybe it's done, I actually never investigated why it was done, but it's often not exactly correct to call, some people use the word rate incorrectly. So let me clarify that generally speaking, it's a quantity per unit of time. For example, the woman's heart rate, rate is used properly here, was 60 beats per minute. The driver's rate of speed was 60 miles per hour. The man's pay rate was $60 per day. They all have something in common, and that is the denominator has time, time in it. And that's important distinction when we're distinguishing rates from risks or proportions. So a rate can be expressed as the number of cases. Usually, it's the number of new cases. Remember, we talked about incidence versus prevalence? Well, this slide is a little faulty in that it should say the number of new cases divided by a component of time, just like we did before. And it, again, ranges from zero to infinity. It's a ratio. It's not a proportion. And measure speed at which things happen. So here's a formal definition that I snagged from David Kleinbaum's CD-ROM, which is called Active Epi. And it's now free. It used to cost money. And it's not a CD-ROM anymore, actually. It's a website. You can look it up. It's got interactive information about epidemiology. It's a textbook online, basically, and it's interactive. It's by David Kleinbaum. It's called Active Epi. So just Google that if you're interested. I recommend it. This is just a little screenshot from that. Number of new cases of disease over number of person-time units of observation. Here's an example. Let's say we want to know the rate of Parkinson's disease in a certain population. So we could look at the number of new cases of Parkinson's disease divided by the total number of years disease-free subjects were observed. And that's follow-up time, that's person time. And I'm going to show you a picture of that in a second, if that's a little confusing. But first, what information would you always want to know with a rate? Very important to think in terms of time. It doesn't matter which order you put these in, but time. This is per year. Rates can be per year, per five years, per 10 years. It's important to state what that time period is. Place. In this case, I put Knox County, because I'm in Knox County, so I use that as an example. But again, the rate in Knox County is going to be different, presumably, from the rate in your county. So it's important to state the place. And population, in this case, we're looking at people over 30 years of age. So person, place, and time is a classic trio of things that you consider in epidemiology. So I tried to do that here. We're going to look at this again. I'm going to give you another example. But this is when we talk about follow-up time. And you see there, in this case, we'll come back to this, but just to introduce it to you, it's five people. Five people who are being followed in time for disease, and that little X represents a person getting that disease, and that person is not followed after that point. It's like if you've been given 100 light bulbs from the GE company and said to follow them to see what the rate of burnout is, once they burn out, you're not going to follow them anymore. I mean, imagine you sitting there following a bunch of lights that have burned out already. They're not going to burn out again. Therefore, you don't follow them anymore. So that's why person number two is not followed after the person gets the outcome. And that's also, by the way, why you don't start with people who already have the outcome. That's very important in a follow-up. We'll talk about study design later, but that's a basic principle, and we'll come back to that graph in a second. So prevalence. We talked about incidence, which is new disease. Now prevalence, very important distinction. That's the number of disease that are existing right now. It doesn't say when they occur. If somebody is HIV-positive, it doesn't say, if you're looking at the prevalence, it doesn't say when they were infected or diagnosed. It says only that this is the number of people, this is the percentage of people in the population with this outcome. So it's not a rate. A prevalence is not a rate. There's no time component in the calculation. It's a proportion. It measures the proportion of existing disease in the population at a given time. It's a snapshot. It's dimensionless. It's like any percentage. It's going to be zero to one. 100% prevalence of a disease in a population is as high as you can go. It means everybody has it. And zero is the lowest. It means nobody has it. So here's a formula. Number of existing cases divided by the number of people in the population. And that includes people with and people, that's the whole population. Again, that's what makes it a proportion and not just a simple ratio. So incidence, again, measures the occurrence of new cases in a population at risk over time, and it can be measured as a proportion or a rate. Remember, we mentioned risks and rates. Both of those involve incident cases or new cases of disease. So some people use the term incidence proportion. I don't, actually. But you'll hear terms such as incidence proportion. You'll hear people just talk about incidents and not specify whether they're using a rate or a risk. You'll also hear the term cumulative incidence, and it all boils down to risk. For me, it all boils down to risk. It's not a rate. All these terms are talking about risk. Proportion. Measures the probability of developing disease during a period of observation. And that ties in with the graphs that we were looking at before and the examples that we were looking at before. And again, it's a proportion. And risk is, now, you've seen this with incidence a minute ago, now we're just redefining it as risk. It's the number of new onset of cases while you're following people up for those cases divided by the number of people that you're following up. If you're not following up somebody in a different part of the world, they're not included in the denominator. It's only people that could be included in the numerator. Those are the people that are in the denominator. They could be included in the numerator if they get the outcome. Again, specify the time period, specify the population, and specify the place, person, place, and time. Here's an example. Now, this may seem a little complicated to some of you. It's not worth stressing over. It's something that you can come back to. Now, if we're following 2,000 newborns at monthly intervals to measure the development of infection in the first year, and 50 do during that time, the risk is 50 new cases. Go back to the formula. 50 new cases in 2,000 people. It's 2.5% risk. Okay? And now, we're talking about rate. Very important to distinguish between risk and rate. Measures how rapidly new cases develop during a specified time period. Again, the numerator is the same. New cases. The risk and the rate has the same numerator, but it has a different denominator. Some people use the term incidence, again, whether they're referring to risk or rate is not always clear. Incidence density, now, that is clear. That is a rate, because it's a strange term, but you're really looking within a time period how quickly things are happening. So if you're looking at a time graph, it almost looks like you're looking at the density of what occurs over time. Do I use the term rate more than incidence density? Of course I do. Incidence rate is really more commonly used. Again, number of new cases. Incident cases. This time, not the total in the population, like a risk, but the person time at risk during study period. And we're going to calculate that in a second. We're going to look and see, how do we calculate the person? So the person time accounts for all the time each person is in the population at risk. The length of time for each person is called that person's person time. And then, the sum of person times is called the total person time at risk for the population. So 100 persons followed for 10 years is 1,000 person years. Each person contributes 10 years, and there are 100 people. Interestingly, 1,000 people followed for one year is also 1,000 person years. That's why we also, when we talk about person years, we also say how long the follow-up period was. How many people were being followed? How long the follow-up period? Even what was the average follow-up time per person? And it does assume the rate is constant over different periods of time, which is not always the correct assumption. So that's a little caveat, and that's why it's important to understand where your person year is coming from. How many people over what period of time? Because rates do change over time, like HIV has changed over time. So let's keep going. And this is the example I referred to before. And very quickly, we can calculate person time. We can calculate the number of new cases very easily. It's one. Nobody else had it but person number two. Person number one contributed 12 months. I hope you see that. That person was in follow-up for 12 months without leaving the study or getting the outcome. So that person contributed 12 months. And so did number three, four, and five. So did persons three, four. The only one who didn't contribute 12 months was person number two, and that person contributed six months. So that should be 54 months if you add it up. So one case occurred in 54 months. That gives you the rate. And that gives you the rate. One new case per 4.5 person years, which is 54 months, is 2.2222 cases per person per year, which is a very awkward number. So we might say one new case in 54 person months. And by the way, you can put it in terms of person year, person month, person minute. Makes no difference. It's the same thing. You need to put it in a way that is the most easily digested by you and the people you're communicating with. Now, incidence, prevalence, and duration have a relationship with each other. Now that you sort of, I'm assuming you have some idea what we mean by incidence, which is new cases, prevalence, existing cases, and duration of disease is how long you have that disease. So this looks like a bowl, where you're filling the bowl of existing cases, which is prevalence, with new cases. New cases are always coming into any group of people. And in that group of people, those new cases become prevalent cases. And those prevalent cases, well, they get into society by getting the disease, or they get into the pool, the prevalence pool, by getting the outcome. And they get out in two ways. They're either cured of that condition, and then they're not a prevalent condition anymore, or they die from it or with it. So obviously, the more incidents, the more people are getting the disease, that is adding to the number of people in the prevalence pool. And the more people that are dying or getting cured is taking away. When incidence exceeds prevalence, I mean, sorry, death, prevalence goes up. When death or cure exceeds incidence, prevalence goes down. And eventually, if things stay the same, you get into what's called a steady state, and then that's where the prevalence sort of sits, you know, once it reaches a steady I think a good example here is understanding that prevalence doesn't necessarily mean something bad is happening when prevalence increases. Let's say that somebody says that the number of people with HIV-positive status, the prevalence of people, I should say, with HIV-positive status is increasing over the last 10 years. Is that a big concern? Obviously, nobody should have HIV. Nobody should have it. But it may not imply that more people are getting infected. But it may not imply that more people are getting infected. It actually may be because more people are getting treated in such a way that they can live longer with the disease. Increasing the duration will increase the prevalence just as much as increasing incidence. That's why the formula on the last bullet point, prevalence equals incidence times duration. So the prevalence can be increasing not because more people are getting infected. The prevalence could be increasing because more people are surviving. And that's actually good news. So that's an example where, where increasing prevalence is actually good news. It's not from number of new cases. It's from the number of people who are able to live longer. So now let's go into measures of mortality. I remember I said that they're basically the same measures. The difference being you have to say death. Risk of death, rate of death instead of rate of disease. When you say risk of disease or risk of, or rate of disease, you're often implying not just mortality. You're implying new, new diagnosis. So really, it's the same. It's the same for, you just have to be clear that you're talking about death or mortality. Case fatality, case fatality rate is not a rate per se. And you can tell by looking at the formula. You may hear the term, so case fatality rate. This is not a rate, it's a proportion. The proportion of deaths from a specific illness. At one time, for example, having AIDS was, the case fatality rate was very high. Now that we have treatments for it, the case fatality rate is very low. So the case fatality rate links in with prevalence in a way, doesn't it? Why is it called a rate if it's a proportion? Because that is done, fortunately or unfortunately, it's, it's, it's done a lot. You hear the term rate when it's not technically speaking a rate. It doesn't involve time. But try not to be confused by that. It may be a convention and it's easier to say for some people, it's easier to use the term for some reason. But this is actually a proportion. And of like, like the slide says, a case fatality is a measure of the severity of the disease. And in terms of AIDS or HIV, it's still severe per se, but it's not as severe in terms of your life expectancy. That's really what it's talking about. It's not as severe in terms of death. And of course, case fatality can be used to measure if it's some new therapy. That's my example. Again, HIV. As the HIV treatments and therapies get better, or AIDS, the case fatality rate goes down. Proportionate mortality, that's another term. And I, to be honest, I don't use it very much in my work, but it's important to understand what it is. Of all deaths, the proportion caused by a certain disease. So of the total deaths, how many are due to heart attack? How many are due to stroke? How many due to cancer? I mean, this sort of gives you a picture of what's going on in your population. So you can determine the leading cause of death. And obviously, the leading cause of death now is different from the leading cause of death 150 years ago, when it was mostly infectious disease. And the leading cause of death in our part of the world is clearly different from the leading cause of death in another part of the world. So you can compare proportionate mortality across regions and across time. But it says here in my slide, so proportionate cause-specific death is dependent on all other causes of death. So what does that mean? It means that if you're in a war zone, heart attack and cancer may not be as high of a proportion of mortality in that group, obviously. It's gonna, it's gonna give way to, to war-related casualties. Perhaps I can think of a better example, but I mean, in, in a place where there's a high rate of death from infections, infectious disease, the proportion of mortality from chronic disease will go down, obviously. It does not tell us the risk of dying from a disease. That's completely different. That's completely different. If you have a disease, whether you die from it or not, doesn't depend on what other people are dying from. Correct? So here's an example from the CDC. One of every four deaths in the United States, and it should have a, a time to it. So let's give it one. Let's say one of every four deaths in the United States in 2015 is due to cancer. This may change over time. One of four deaths means the proportion of mortality from cancer is 25%. So there's crude mortality rate, not always a rate, depends on how it's used. Crude mortality rate is not always a rate. It includes all deaths in the total population and time period. And I'll, we'll give you an example of that. For example, the crude mortality rate in Tennessee is, the crude rate in Florida is, and that's not accounting for anything but the total number over time. Cause-specific mortality rate. So what is the mortality rate due to cancer? What is the, in, in Tennessee? What is the cause-specific mortality rate due to heart disease in Tennessee? Age-specific, obviously. What's the, what is the mortality rate in children zero to four compared to people 14 to 20 compared to people 64 to 70? Those are age-specific rates. And they're not just mortality, like I said. Could be age-specific incidence rates as well. So here's an example of age adjustment. We're looking here first at crude mortality rates. Crude. Crude mortality rates suggest that mortality in Florida, and that's the picture on the right, is much higher than the crude mortality rate in Alaska. And although these data are a few years old, almost 20 years old, it's still true today. The crude mortality rate in Florida is higher than Alaska. Almost three times higher in this case. I mean, that's obviously, if you're living in Florida right now, maybe you're thinking, oh, should I move? Will I be safer in Alaska if I move? Florida just has such a high crude mortality rate. Well, that's where crude comes in. It's not considering something very important. And perhaps you know what that is. If you think about who lives in Florida more than they live in Alaska, and that's older people. Older people. So don't sweat over these numbers. This is something to work out on your own. But these are how the crude, you'll see here, I have totals and I have age-specific rates or information at this point from Alaska and Florida. So these are how I got the crude numbers. I just did the totals. I did not consider the age of the population at all. So there's Alaska and Florida. But what we could do, now, what we could do if we suspect that Florida is a much older population, is we can separate and consider by age what happens in these two groups. And one way we do that by direct standardization is we say, okay, let's, let's see what would happen if both Florida and Alaska had the exact same age structure. The exact same percentage of old people, the exact same percentage of young people, the exact same percentage of middle-aged people. How do we do this? We take the rates for age-specific rates in Florida and Alaska and we apply them to some standard population. That's why it's called direct standardization. The United States is a, is a good example of a, of a population we can use. We can say, what would happen in the United States if this was the experience, if, if they experienced everything that Alaska experiences according to these different age groups? Now let's see what would happen in the United States if everyone followed Florida's rates of disease. And then we can compare apples to apples and set of apples to oranges. So that's basically what we used here in this example was the age-specific rates we applied to a standard population, which was the US population in the year 2000. And now we're not looking at totals, we're looking at age-specific. And we're doing it age group by age group. And everybody should be the same because, I mean, the population is now hypothetically, the United States experienced what Alaska experiences. Now hypothetically, the same population, the United States experienced what Florida experiences. Now we can compare apples to apples. And now, things actually look a little worse in Alaska. You see how they looked better in Alaska when they were, when everything was crude and we didn't account for the age structure? Now, if you look at the age-adjusted, the age-adjusted mortality rate in Alaska, it's 875 per 100,000. In Florida, it's 815 per 100,000. So if you were halfway across the country, moving from Florida to Alaska, it's time to turn around. You didn't have to move after all. We adjusted for age. We adjusted for age. Age was a confounder and we adjusted for it. Now, there's something called indirect standardization. If you don't have age-specific rates in your population, you can just use the general populations as, as an expected number. This is what we'd expect in our group. And if our group has higher than the standardized mortality ratio, it's called, it's going to be higher than one. It's more than what you'd expect based on everyone else's experience. So direct standardization is more straightforward in some ways than what, than this is called indirect standardization, but they both can be used. There are some tricks to it, something to review on your own. In the world of epidemiology where we're looking at, if you're, if you're an etiologic-based epidemiologist and you're conducting studies of what causes disease, what's causing this, which treatment is better, you're probably going to end up not dealing with standardization. You're going to control for confounding or age and other ways, like, you know, computers, multivariate analyses. But these terms are, are good to know. They're good to know for some, some types of epidemiology. They're still used. So we're going to take a 10-minute break. And as soon as we come back, I'm going to look at some of the questions here. And maybe we'll start, if there are any questions, certainly type in a few if you have any. And we can start by, by addressing those questions. So we're going to take a 10-minute break and we'll be back at about 1:53 Eastern Standard Time. It's now one, almost 1:43. So we'll come back at 1:53. So we'll come back at 1:53.
Hello, everybody. I hope you're all back. And I did have a chance to look at some of the questions. And most of the questions had to do with the availability of the slides in the presentation after our session today. And it's my understanding that the slides and the presentation will both be available to you. Certainly, you can, as I said, you can always get in touch with me. But the presentation and the slide should be available on the website, on the organization's website. The other question had to do with the textbooks again. And I want to give you some advice about some textbooks that students here have enjoyed. The one I mentioned first was Leon Gordis. Leon Gordis, G-O-R-D-I-S. And it's an epidemiology textbook. And it's on the fifth edition now. But I just looked online, Amazon. I see the fourth edition is selling for $4.67 plus shipping, of course. It will probably come to $8.66 for the fourth edition. And I think you don't need the fifth edition. Gordis may disagree with me, but they're both good. I'm not knocking the fifth edition. But I think the fourth edition at that price is a very reasonable book to have. And I wouldn't feel bad about recommending it. It's sort of an easy style. You know, it's got an easy reading style to it. Another one I've used and I like is, I can't even pronounce his name, though. It's by Moises Sklo. Is the best way I can pronounce it. S-Z-K-L-O. Moises, M-O-Y-S-E-S. And it's called Epidemiology Beyond the Basics. It's a little bit more expensive. It'll probably cost you $20 at least. Maybe it's a little bit more in-depth than Gordis if you want to get more, a little bit more advanced. But it's also a reasonably good book. Another one that we like a little bit here is by William Oleckno. O-L-E-C-K-N-O. William A. Oleckno. And it's called Epidemiology Concepts and Methods. I think it's a very reasonable book as well. I don't know what that one's going for. And finally, there's the classic textbooks by Ken Rothman. There's a big one, which is very detailed, very mathematical, very statistical. You may find that one expensive and also difficult reading, only for the most initiated student. And Rothman has what we refer to sometimes as Rothman Lite. It's just by Ken Rothman. It's not the big book. It's a more, you know, a more elementary Rothman book. You'll know it because it's smaller, cheaper, and it's only Ken Rothman. It doesn't have the other authors on it. And that one, again, is short and sweet, but goes a little, it's a little bit more for people who are more, let's say, conceptual, theoretical, statistically oriented. So the most generally readable one for most students is Gordis. And it's going for a great price right now. So I just thought I'd answer that question by Katrina. And now we're going to get into study design. You know, study design really dictates what measures of frequency and measures of association you're going to use. Remember before we were talking about risks? And we were talking about rates? And we were talking about incident disease? And we were talking about prevalent disease? Well, that really has implications for study design. Because if you're doing a study design where you're following healthy people up in time, you're saying, all right, let's see what happens. They're smoking now, let's see what happens. They're not smoking now, let's see what happens. That's a cohort approach. And that's what we're going to talk about. But that really talks about new disease, new incident disease. Well, on the other hand, if you are, what we'll talk about again is like a case-control design, which you may know about, where you're looking at people with disease. Again, you can use incident disease or you can use prevalent disease. For reasons I'll get into, it's probably also better to use incident disease. So incident disease is really more etiological, while prevalence is more service-oriented. You know, how many people, if you're working for a school or university, how many people have this condition? How many people have this condition right now? That may determine how many nurses we hire or doctors or if we have a special program to deal with this condition. So that's why prevalence sometimes is considered less of an etiologic measure and more of a public health measure. You know, a service-oriented, you know, how can we provide services? So study design really plays into this, these measures. And we'll try to connect them. So the top of the heap, sometimes, people consider the experimental studies. Like, you've probably heard of a randomized controlled trial or a clinical trial or randomized clinical trial. Those are often considered the top of the line for epidemiologic studies. And for, and it's on top of the slide here. But I honestly think that in many circumstances, you get better answers with an observational study. In fact, you get more correct answers with an observational study. So I'm not going to get into the specifics of that, only to say that the hierarchy is false, in a way. It's really not a hierarchy of what's the best study design. It's a hierarchy of what is the least or most vulnerable to certain biases. It doesn't mean that they're biased. And if something's the least biased or least susceptible, I'm sorry, doesn't mean that it's not biased. And something's the most, it's like having a cold. We may determine that one person's more susceptible to colds. That doesn't mean that person has a cold. The less susceptible person could be the one with the cold. It's the same thing with study designs. So it's unfortunate when people say, well, I don't believe the results of this study because it's an X design or a Y design. I think that's a mistake. I think every study design has a purpose. Every study design, you know, needs to be taken with a grain of salt, even if it's an experimental study, even if it's experimental. So, but here's the basic distinction here. We have experiment and we have observational study. Experiments are one in which we, the investigators, can manipulate the exposure. Here, you take this drug and you take this other drug. That's our determination. An observational study is one where we are just recording and observing what happens. And those observational studies include cohort, case control, cross-sectional, and ecological. There are other designs, and there are even hybrid designs. Like, you can mix a cohort and case control in essence to get something called a case cohort. I'm not going to get into that. One, they're rare, and two, we don't really have enough time for that. But if we can just understand the basics of these four designs, we will understand, or at least have a better understanding of what the hybrid designs are trying to do. So experimental studies are characterized by the manipulation of exposure by the researcher. It's a type of experimental research design for comparing different treatments usually, in which the assignment of treatments to patients is made by random mechanism, a coin flip, for example. Customarily, the present table of patients' characteristics, that's, you know, these are the characteristics of the people in our cohort. Because once again, this population may act completely, react completely differently to the treatment than another population. And just because you randomize doesn't mean that there's no confounding. That's why we do randomize. It's one of the main reasons we randomize, to make sure that we don't get, in our treatment group, we don't get all smokers, for example, and we don't get all non-smokers in the non-treatment group. That's going to mess up our results. That's going to confound our results. But just because we randomized, by chance alone, we can still have confounding. And it still needs to be controlled. So that's why it's customary to look at a table and even a clinical trial that's been randomized and see that there is not a major imbalance in the treatment and non-treatment group or in Group A and Group B on certain factors that we think may be confounders. That's something to look for. Start with these studies. You start with a study population. You randomly assign them to two or more conditions. I mean, there could be a third treatment here. This is just a simple drawing. And then you compare, did this new treatment work better than the current treatment? If it does, and of course, if we see it in other studies, the new treatment may become the current treatment. So I'm going to give you, I mean, this isn't a quiz, and I'm going to give you a little quiz later. I'm sorry about that, but I'll give you the answers, obviously. But this is an example that I took from the literature. I'm sure you've all done a PubMed search. You can get abstracts on PubMed for free. Not all articles are free, but the abstracts are always free. And I just copied this from PubMed. And it's an example that you will, I mean, you'll see something like this in the literature. And what should pop in your head right away? Fifteen patients were randomized, there's a clue right there, to receive a preoperative beverage with high or low carbohydrate content. So we're starting with people. And we're randomizing them to get a high or low carbohydrate drink before they go through surgery. And then we look at cognitive ability after surgery. Because, you know, you've been under the influence of anesthesia. Maybe having this drink, high carb drink, before you go under, it may actually help you to recover quicker. Who knows? The point is, I mean, I didn't, it's not my study. The point is, do you recognize this as a clinical trial? As a randomized clinical trial? Well, that's an easy one. You should do that. You should, you see anything like this, it should clue you that this is a randomized clinical trial. Okay, so what about this one? I admit, this is an easy test right now, but it's going to get a little harder later. Yes, you should already, I don't mean to rush you, but already you should say, this is another randomized clinical trial. It's an experimental study. The investigators are deciding whether you get the antidepressant or a placebo, which, as you know, is something that looks like a drug, but it's actually nothing. It doesn't do anything. It's a clinical trial. Some limitations of a clinical trial. Ethical considerations. For example, I was just reading a study the other day about perinatal asphyxia, which means children who can't breathe for one reason or another during delivery. I mean, you could not do a clinical trial of that. That's just the most extreme example I could think of. But certainly alcohol or drinking or a lot of other things, you know, drinking alcohol or smoking, you really can't do a clinical trial. So ethical considerations are very important. Often, people who do clinical trials or volunteer to be clinical trials are a select population. What does that mean? It means they're a very special group. And I don't mean special necessarily good or bad. I mean, they're different from the people who don't volunteer to be in clinical trials. So you need to understand that what happens in a special group may not apply. We call it generalizability, may not apply to other people. Duration, well, there are plenty of diseases out there, and cancer is one, where it takes, we're talking about, you may have heard the term latency period. The latency period, I mean, when you smoke, you don't necessarily get cancer two days later or two years later or even 20 years later. The relationship between smoking and breast cancer, for example, if there is one, it's controversial. But if there is one, it seems to be about 40 years, 35, 30 to 40 years before the effects of smoking show up in terms of a noticeable difference in the rate of breast cancer or the risk of breast cancer. How many clinical trials can go on for 40 years? Not that we want to do one of smoking. I just said that ethically, we can't do that. But whether it's a dietary intervention, whether it's a drug intervention, sometimes you simply can't go on with a clinical trial. It's expensive and it's not feasible. And if it's a disease with a long latency or it's a condition with a long latency with respect to that exposure, I mean, clinical trial, maybe at best you can get some intermediate outcome, but not the outcome that you're ultimately looking at. And adherence and compliance is a big issue with clinical trials. If you're randomized to take a certain drug and you don't like the side effects, are you necessarily going to stay on that drug? I know people who are randomized to stick to a certain diet. And a few people were caught after midnight in the local pizza shop. And they totally were kicked out of the study. Anyway, the point is, is that adherence to the condition and compliance with whatever the treatment is is often poor. And it needs to be monitored, and that's one of the limitations. While observational studies, obviously, people are doing what they want to do. That's a little bit different. Blinding with an experimental study. Blinding, what does it mean? It means that if people know what treatment they're getting, they're going to maybe feel different. Or if they don't feel different, they may think they feel different. I know that's subjective versus objective, but they're going to report differently anyway. So if you don't tell people what they're taking, whether they're on placebo or not, that's blind. If the doctors, if the investigators don't know, that's double-blind. Because if we know, we might be able to push a little harder to get the answers we want. So double-blind is the way to go. And the placebo, of course, is because the placebo itself can have an effect. I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen. So that's why you want to make sure it's not the act of the treatment, the act of giving the treatment to somebody. Because that's what the placebo is for both groups. It's the act of doing. And then to see if above and beyond the act of treating, whether the actual treatment has an effect on its own. So that's important of blinding and placebo groups. I already said this, so I'm going to keep going. You want groups that are comparable for everything except the treatment, if possible. So that differences in the outcome can be fairly ascribed only to the difference between the groups, in other words, to the treatment. That's where the randomization comes in. That's why you check to make sure the randomization worked. And, you know, you're not going to get a group of people from one part of the side of the village or one group of people for treatment and one group of people for the placebo. It doesn't work that way. It's not going to work. You can't then say that it's totally due or infer that it's totally due to the treatment. So very important. Now, it's a type of prospective cohort study, if you think about it. We often say prospective cohort study when we're talking about the observational form of this follow-up design. But actually, a clinical trial is a cohort study. It's just one where we manipulate the exposure. That's why we don't call it a prospective cohort study. We reserve that title for the observational study, which I'm about to tell you about. We reserve that title for the observational study, which I'm about to tell you about. And we really want to say clinical trial, you know, clinical trial. But if you think about how it works, it's a prospective cohort study. It's just a very special case of one. You're following people up, you're assembling a group of people, a cohort, and you are assessing their exposure, or giving them exposure, and you're following them up for an outcome. So a clinical trial is a type of cohort study. Just be aware of the fact that if you say cohort study, everyone's going to take it to be the observational form of a cohort study. It involves an active follow-up of a group of people and determines their outcomes. That is true for experimental and observational. However, a cohort study typically referred to observational, no assigned treatments. And this is true, this here, if we had a randomized component to it, it could be a graph of a clinical trial. But in this case, we are simply assessing who's exposed, E plus, and who's not exposed, E negative. Could be smoking and lung cancer. So we're looking amongst eligible patients, in other words, people without the outcome, for example. We're assessing, do you, I'm just using smoking and lung cancer, do you smoke, do you not smoke? Let's see what happens, let's follow you up to see what happens. Look at the time, it's the bottom line, look at the time. We start with eligible patients, we then assess exposure, we then later assess the outcome. Very important. This is something called temporality. This helps ensure that the outcome did not influence the exposure. As you know, if we're looking at smoking and lung cancer, if someone's been diagnosed with lung cancer, or even suspects that they might be getting lung cancer, what might they do? They might quit, right? And then it looks like not smoking caused the lung cancer, but of course, smoking caused the lung. So in this type of design, we have some control over something we call temporality, which is a reasonable understanding or belief that the exposure preceded the outcome. Very important. Very good thing about a cohort study, is that we can sort of almost always have some reasonable confidence that the exposure preceded the outcome. Very important. Gave you this example before, when we calculated rates and risks. The risk here, as we could have calculated, there are five people and one disease. One, one disease occurred among five people being followed up. So what's the risk? If you said one divided by five, or 20%, 12-month risk is 20% in this case, for whatever disease we're looking at. And as you remember, the rate was one divided by 54 months. And we, you have an earlier slide where we calculated that. But the important thing here is that risks and rates are calculated with the cohort design, a follow-up of people. Try to calculate a risk and a rate without following people up. And it's, I'd say, almost impossible. In most cases, it is impossible. There are some rare cases where you can make assumptions. But the risk and the rate require a cohort or follow-up design. And now you see why, okay? Now, I'm giving you a, I obviously did these pictures, and I'm not very good with artwork in PowerPoint, but I obviously did these pictures to show, in this group of people, that there's a higher risk, and by the way, also a higher rate. We don't have actual numbers, so we're not going to calculate it, among the exposed. So do you see that? The exposed has a higher risk, or if we're looking at person time, which we don't have here, a higher rate. In this case, we have, we have four people in each group, we can do the risks. The risk is double. It's a 50% risk in the exposed, it's a 25% risk in the unexposed. If you take the ratio, which is a measure we use all the time, risk ratio, the risk ratio is two. And that means a doubling of risk in the exposed. And here you can see that there was a doubling of risk in the exposed. Why do some lines end sooner than others? Well, people drop out of a cohort study. You do not have to remain in a cohort study if you don't want to. And if you drop out, and we don't know what happens to you, we have to just count your time that we did know what happened to you, and not count the time where we don't know what happened to you. So that's why these lines end, some sooner than others. Everyone's got a different person time in large cohort studies, pretty much. Everyone's got a slightly, you do person days, everyone pretty much has a different person. So cohort study definition, groups defined on the basis of some characteristic are prospectively followed to see whether an outcome of interest occurs, and if it's different in the exposed versus unexposed group. So that's where the comparison comes. You compare the proportion of persons with the disease during follow-up and after the end of follow-up, and the exposed compared to the proportion with, with disease and the unexposed. And this is actually, slide has a, this slide has a mistake in it. I want you to see that. Because what I'm talking about, if you were there from the beginning of this talk, is proportion is not a rate. Well, it's actually not a mistake, I say, or compare rates, you can compare proportions or compare rates. The important thing I want you to know is they're not the same thing. And the slide may imply they're the same thing, but I didn't mean it that way. Okay, so what's the motivation? If the exposure is associated with the disease, like it was in that last example we just showed you, if I go back one slide, it is associated with disease, certainly more disease in the exposed group. We expect that the proportion of persons with the disease in the exposed group will be greater than the proportion with the disease in the unexposed group. That was my hypothesis, that was your hypothesis. You said that the smokers are going to have more X, and they did. They had twice as much, according to these risks. So, okay, hypothesis confirmed. So again, uh, this is another way, this is just another figure that shows the same thing we showed before. And time this way goes down. We're starting at the top of the page, we're going down. We're starting with exposed and non-exposed, and we're looking to see who gets disease and who doesn't. I like to show slides in different ways, so that you're, you know that they're the same thing. That's important. You don't say, ah, well, this is different, you know, it's not, it's the same thing. And there's a timeline. And, um, well, I am going to see, okay. I am going to distinguish briefly the difference between a prospective cohort study and a historical cohort study. Sometimes, in fact, most of the time, a historical cohort study is called a retrospective cohort study. I don't like the term. It looks like you're looking back when you're not. So let me, I will keep the term retrospective on the slide, but we'll call it historical. They're both cohort studies because, one, we are actively following people up in real time. If we started today to look at a group of people and followed them up for a year, that would be a prospective cohort study. What's a historical cohort study? Let's say I had records that I could go to, and I could say, all right, who was exposed in 1930? Or, let's just say, let's use another example, not a, not a pleasant one, but one that's been used before. Who was exposed? We have records of who was in Hiroshima at the time of the atomic bomb explosion in 1945. Now, we can still get records for people after that point, as to who had, let's say, breast cancer, or who had thyroid cancer. Again, the exposure comes first. The exposure is recorded first, in both types of studies. One, we're doing it in real time, that's the prospective cohort study. The historical cohort study, we're doing it by reassembling the cohort historically. But still, it has to share the same quality. You assess the exposure before you assess the outcome. So we know who was at Hiroshima, and we can compare what happened after that using records. Let's say we had records from 1946 to 1996, 50 years. That's all in the past, and yet, we still looking at things first from exposure, then following up to outcome. That's what makes it a cohort study. So do not get confused. Do not get confused by others, with other study designs, like the case control design. This is absolutely a cohort study, that we are just reassembling, not in real time, we're not looking forward in real time, we are going back and getting historical records, which allow us to do the same thing. Start with exposure, go forward in time, end with outcome. Historical cohort study, prospective cohort study, both cohort studies. Okay? Obviously, for looking at the effects, right, if we wanted to look at the effects of exposure to an atomic bomb, we would have to do, fortunately, we would have to do a historical cohort study. And that's one of the advantages of a historical cohort study. You can look at exposures that don't occur anymore. That's one advantage. Another advantage is, think of how fast you can do a historical cohort study. It's all record-based. In theory, you can do it in a few months. A prospective study could take you 40 years. So why even do a prospective study? Well, for example, you may not have records that you, that are valid. There may not have been that exposure in the past. What if we want to look at exposures that are only recent? Of course, like, like, uh, certain drugs for HIV. We can't go to historical records. So there are, there's a time and a place for historical cohort studies, and for prospective cohort studies. But don't get confused, they're still cohort studies. They still have that important feature of exposure assessment, followed by follow-up, and then assessment of the outcome. So here is basically what I just said. So I don't, I don't want to take up too much time repeating myself, but you will have the slide, I promise. Again, here we're using the term retrospective cohort study, but I really like the term historical cohort study, so that you don't think we're looking back. We're looking back only in the sense of assembling this cohort. We are not doing a retrospective view. In other words, starting with disease and looking back at exposure. That's a retrospective frame, you know, frame of reference. That's the case control study that I'm going to talk about. That is not the historical cohort study. David Kleinbaum, and again, I recommend that you take a look at the Active Epi website, it's free now. It used to cost money, now it's free. And he's big on talking about directionality. So what is the directionality of a cohort study? It is forward. Why? Because you start with exposure, and you look forward in time to see what happens. Whether it's done historically or not, it's forward directionality. That's why retrospective almost sounds like it's a backwards directionality. It isn't. That's why I prefer the term historical cohort. Okay, so, hopefully, you're not confused by that. I don't see any questions in the question box about that. So hopefully, you're okay with that. The strength of a cohort study? Well, like I said, you can get incidents, new cases, you can use those great measures that we talked about, the risks and the rates. You can also understand a little bit more about the natural history of the disease. In a cohort, for example, how long does it take for this drug to work? How long does somebody progress with this disease? How does this disease progress over time? How does the cure progress over time? So that's natural history, and that's something you do best with a cohort study. The known temporal sequence, what does that mean? Fancy words, it simply means that you know, in most cases, that the exposure preceded the outcome. Remember I said how important that was? That's one of the great strengths of a cohort study. Rare exposures, it's efficient in investigating rare exposures. When we talk about the case control design, that's not as good for rare exposures. Let's say you, well, we're not there yet, but let's say you assemble a bunch of cases and a bunch of controls, and you're trying to, your hypothesis has to do with rubber factory workers. How many rubber factory workers are you going to get? Not many, okay? You're going to have a lot of people in your case group, you're going to have a lot of people in your control group, but you're not going to have a lot of rubber factory workers. Now, in the cohort study, what do you think we can do? What do you think we can do? Absolutely, we can go and get a group of people who are working at Rubbermaid down the street. And we can say, all right, rubber factory workers, I'm going to follow you up now. We're going to use another group of workers as a control group. Okay? That's why cohort studies, you can go after the exposure you want, in a more efficient way. Permit study of multiple exposure then outcomes, well, if you did a cohort study of smoking lung cancer, are you finished? Or can you go back and look at the data and say, hey, we also collected data on breast cancer, we also collected data on diabetes, does smoking cause diabetes? Wait a minute, we also have nutrient data. So we could look at nutrients and diabetes, we could look at body mass index and lung, you know, we can do any, you know, we can look at multiple things. An example of that is the Nurses Cohort Study, the Nurses Health Study, out of Harvard, you know, what, 5,000 publications? So it's multiple exposures, multiple outcomes. And that cohort is going to keep giving. You're still going to see papers out of that cohort. So let me see if it, uh, the website, somebody had a question about the website. Now, I don't actually have it in front of me, but here's what you look for. It's Active Epi, A-C-T-I-V-E-P-I, Active Epi, without the E, I think, inactive, I think it's active without the E. And the author is David Kleinbaum, that's K-L-E-I-N-B-A-U-M. It's an Active Epi website, I don't have the exact address right now. If you can't find it, you can email me later, contact me, and I will, I'll find it for you. But it should be easy enough to find. If you type in David Kleinbaum, Active F-B, interactive epidemiology website, for example. And somebody here has posted it, thank you Bianca. It's www dot Active Epi, and there, the E is shared between Active and Epi, so there's only one E in Active Epi, dot com, okay? W-W-W dot Active Epi dot com, thank you Bianca. Okay, next slide. Next slide, yeah, no, I have to click on this thing, now I can get to the next one. Okay, some limitations, of course, are expensive. You don't want to wait 40 years sometimes for an answer. Or even, you don't even want to wait a year in some cases, or five years in some cases. Associations may be due to confounding, just like with any other study, by the way. It's true with any observational study, and to some extent, it's true with a randomized study. Exposure assessed at baseline may be incomplete. Well, that's true. And another, another issue is, if I record you as having smoked in 1990, when I started this study, and I follow you up for, now it's been, you know, 25 years, how do I know you still smoked? I've got you down as a smoker, do you still? So that implies that if I wrote you down as a smoker in 1990, that you're still smoking today. But that may not be necessarily true, all right? So the, the maintenance of exposure is an assumption made in a lot of cohort studies. And that's why some very special cohort studies do what's called repeated measures of exposure. For example, every two years, we're going to reassess. Every two years, we're going to reassess. Most long-term cohort studies, do you think they do that? No. So there is that issue. Is the exposure really maintained? And also, of course, people who didn't smoke in 1990 could have started smoking for some reason. I mean, it's possible, and it does happen. Okay, so that's some of the, uh, oh, uh, another issue, since we're getting sophisticated here. Disease with long preclinical phase may not be detected, what does that mean? That means you may actually have, the, remember we said cohort studies should be able to have the temporal sequence? And I said, usually, not always, but usually, you know, if exposure came first. Well, sometimes, if you have a preclinical disease, you are actually included in the cohort as not having the disease. And the preclinical disease could have affected exposure. Yeah, that's a little bit, you know, hard to follow. But how do they deal with that? They may not look at cases, they may not include cases that occurred within the first few years of follow-up. Just in any, just, that's a way of trying to eliminate some people who may have had preclinical disease before they were, exposure was recorded. It's getting a little sophisticated. Again, if you don't understand that point, just ask a question. And finally, sensitivity, sensitive to follow-up bias? Well, sometimes people, something called selection bias, which we're going to talk about in case control studies, only occurs in cohort studies when people leave. And they can leave. And if they leave in such a way that And if they leave in such a way to change the results of your study, which they can do, that's called follow-up bias or selection bias. Okay, imagine everyone who's receiving drug, who starts to feel better, decides at that point to leave. You're not going to get the same results. That's sort of not going to show the great results that you were hoping for because sometimes people leave in funny, funny patterns. And those funny patterns of leaving a study, that's why, you know, what we try to do in a cohort study and every cohort study is try to keep everyone in. Don't say, ah, it's just another person that we lost. The more you lose, the more you run into the possibility that they're, you're losing them in a pattern of exposure and disease that may actually change or bias the results. Okay, so now we're back to the literature. And now you're going to get a little quiz. Sorry about that, but I think you'll do fine. This is taken from an abstract from the PubMed website. Cut and paste it. And I'm going to ask you what kind of study this is. Cigarette smoking data were collected on all household members during two private censuses in Washington County, Maryland. These two groups were followed up, one from 1963 to 1978, and the other from 1975 to 1994 for first time diagnosis of rectal cancer. All right, so don't choose case control because we haven't talked about that yet. So I guess the only ones we have talked about is cohort study, either prospective or historical or randomized clinical trial. You don't see anything, and they're, they're all forward directionality, but you don't see anything about randomized or, you know, trial or clinical or, or anything that would give you an idea that the investigators manipulated the exposure. Therefore, we know it's a cohort study. People are being followed up forward in time and it's not a clinical trial. We know it's a cohort study. Does it matter if we know if it's historical or prospective? Not so much. I am very happy if you know what a cohort study is. I'm much happier with that than whether you can then say it's a historical and, or prospective. In this case, it's not even 100% clear. To me, it looks like it could be either one. How were they followed? I would have to read more to make sure which it was. Right now, I would have to guess it was a prospective because it sounds like they are actively following people up during those years. Does it really matter? Not necessarily. Not necessarily. I don't want you to get all bent out of shape over is it historical or prospective? Just understand that they're different and they have slightly different issues with each. So all I can say clearly is that it's a cohort study. Again, I'd have to read the paper to know if it's historical or not. That, that is not your concern right now. Just know that this is a cohort study. Okay. Oh, this one's too easy. I may have given you this one already. This is, this is a cohort study, but a special type. Don't call it a cohort study. It's an experimental study. It's a randomized clinical trial. But again, it's a follow-up study. It's, it's, it's an experimental study, but it has the features, the forward directionality of a cohort study. It's a clinical trial. I hope you got the right answers for these. These are very simple, I know. Now, now we're going to talk about case control studies. And maybe the case control study is a little conceptually more difficult for some people. So please do ask if you have any questions. So Kate, I sort of described it earlier. You have a group of cases. Wow, we've got a bunch of people who just got this outcome. Who do we compare them with? Well, we know, we can assess their exposure history. That's a way to put it. We can assess their past exposures. So instead of following up people who smoke to see if they get lung cancer, why don't we do it more efficiently? Because that could take, I don't know, take a long time, right? 10, 20, 30, 40 years? So let's do an efficient, and we don't have data to do a, at the moment, let's say we don't have data to do a historical cohort study. Let's do an efficient cohort study. Let's call it a case control study. Instead of following people up, we'll just start with people who've had lung cancer recently. And we'll ask them, tell us about your past. Tell us about your smoking history. And we'll do the same with another group of people. In the cohort, some people get the outcome, some people don't. So we are representing in a way, we're getting people in this group that don't have lung cancer and seeing if they have, what kind of exposure to cigarettes they have had in the past. Now, first of all, what kind of directionality is that? Remember we talked about directionality? Remember we talked about how David Kleinbaum makes a point of directionality, which I think is a good one? The cohort was forward because we started with the exposure and then we looked to see what happened in the future. This is not a forward directionality. We are starting with cases and non-cases that were called controls. That's why I call it a case control. And we are asking them about what? Past exposure. Did you smoke? How much did you smoke? How long did you smoke? That's backward directionality. So if you get onto his website, ActiveEpi.com, and he talks about directionality, this is what he's talking about. This is the basic perspective of the study. Where you start and where you're looking. Very, very important. Where are you starting? And where are you looking? In this case, we're starting with diseased and non-diseased as, as if this was the end of a study, at the end of a cohort. And we are looking back now. Retrospective directionality, backwards directionality. Now you know I didn't like retrospective cohort study. I like historical. This is, this is a backwards directionality. While a historical cohort is a forward directionality. We're starting now with cases and controls. We are looking back in time. We're asking about past exposure, backwards directionality. Okay, that's, that's where we're starting now. We're keeping directionality in mind. Now we're starting with, see, this is the diagram. Now we're starting not with exposed and unexposed. We're starting with diseased and non-diseased. And now we're looking back in time. We're looking back in time. We're looking back in the past, present. We're looking back in time. This should be a good diagram for you. It's why I'm saying this is a backwards directionality. If you always keep in mind, when you're going through the literature, is this forwards or backwards? You'll never get confused between case control and cohort. And students do. You think you know sometimes. I think I know sometimes. And then we find out we were thinking about it incorrectly or we're not sure. This is a good way to, at least to start to keep track of these study designs. Okay? Now, compared with a cohort, case control studies, they can be done relatively quickly. Because rather than follow you up for 40 years of smoking, you know, assess your smoking, follow you for 40 years, I can now ask you as a case or control, think back 40 years. How long does it take you to think back 40 years? Well, a lot faster than it takes somebody to follow you for 40 years. You could think back 40 years in a few seconds. But there is an issue, of course. How well do you remember what you did 40 years ago? That's the problem. That's one of the main problems of a backwards directionality of a case control design. But let's look at the good things first. Let's not, let's not jump, let's not be, be too harsh on the study. It has actually saved a lot of lives. More efficient for rare diseases, right? If we had a huge cohort, how many people would we get with a rare type of thyroid cancer? Well, not many. Even if you had a million people in your cohort and you spent a zillion dollars to follow a million people for 40 years, you may still not get enough of this rare form of cancer. Rather, go around, get every case that you can get from the whole country. It's almost like having the whole country as your cohort study. You can get every case in a case control study if you're lucky, if they agree, if you get them before they die and they agree and they're eligible. That's much more quick and efficient and less expensive than trying to do a cohort study that large for that long. Again, you can't, you cannot evaluate multiple outcomes like you can with a cohort study, but you can certainly ask a lot of questions about the past. So you can evaluate multiple exposure. Did you smoke? What kind of food did you eat? What kind of hormones did you take? What kind of vitamins did you take? Did your parents smoke? Did your dog smoke? You know, everything. You can ask about everything. But there are challenges like control selection. Who's a good control for this case? Who's a good control for this case? We got the, we got these cases at the local hospital. Who's a good control? You know what it really boils down to? Think of this as a, as a, as an efficient cohort study. What population gave rise to these cases that we see in our hospital? That is the population that we need to sample from to get our controls. You certainly can't use one of a hospital in this part of the country and then get controls from a different group of people with different characteristics in a different part of the country. That will lead to selection bias. Remember we said selection bias in a cohort study? People dropping out? In a case control study, it's the opposite. You get selection bias when people come in. You select the wrong controls or the wrong cases who don't represent that underlying cohort. So that's an assumption that you make in a case control study when you're trying to do this as, you know, it's really to be looked at as an efficient cohort study. You're saving yourself 40 years in some cases. But the problem is, are you really getting the right people? Did you really get the right comparable people in your group? And that's, that's one of the problems. And again, the challenge here at the bottom, retrospective exposure assessment. Well, how many carrots did you eat when you were a kid? You don't have to tell me. I'm just saying, would you be able to tell me? So if the answer is, no, I really can't tell you, that's one of the problems of a backwards directionality, especially in this case, something that you, you know, you're not likely to remember unless you hate carrots or allergic to them, you're not going to remember. Or you're not going to even know because a lot of recipes have carrots you don't even know about it. So, okay, enough about that for now. Let's, the nest, nested case control. Well, you'll hear the term. I don't want you to dwell on it because Rothman might say all case control studies, in a way, if you can identify the underlying cohort, they would be nested. But what do we really mean when we say nested? It's a case control study that you conduct within a cohort study. Like, for example, the Nurses Health Study. 100,000 nurses followed up for 30 years. And they all have blood that was taken at baseline, you know, when they first enrolled, and it's in the freezer. Let's say you have 100,000 vials of blood and you have a form of cancer that you think that can be linked to a certain protein in the blood. A cohort approach, you have to thaw out 100,000 bloods, determine who has the protein or not, and do follow-up analyses and look at the 100 or so people who had this rare form of disease. Why not do a nested case control within that cohort study? Get a, get the 100 cases, get 100 controls randomly from this population and thaw out, how many bloods would you have to thaw out then? 200. So you would do a case control approach within a cohort study. Sometimes it makes sense to do it. In this case, 200 bloods will give you almost as much efficiency and credibility as 100,000. So that's, that's in essence, why people do nested case control studies. So if you have any questions about that, I'll look to see if you actually do have any questions. I'm just scrolling through your questions real fast. Okay, nothing at the moment. Nothing at the moment. So, but you can look, you can read about nested. You can just type in nested case control study in PubMed and you will see what they're, what they're about and why they're done. They're usually connected more with, believe it or not, and this is the tricky part, they're connected more with cohort studies than with case control. Because you still know that you collected your exposure before you got the disease information, before you, you still followed people up. In some ways, it doesn't have the, the same susceptibilities to bias as a non-nested cohort, not case control study, sorry. So, um, I'm going to give you another test. Sorry about that. What type of study is this? Danish women with a first-time multiple sclerosis discharge diagnosis from a neurological department at most 40 years old. That means they were not older than 40 years old during the period 1998 to 2005. And an age and geographically matched healthy group. That's an important point. An age and geographically matched healthy group. Information on a number of full-term pregnancies was elicited. Now, some of, some students occasionally get this wrong. And they think, wow, this is a cohort study. You know, they're followed up from 1998 to 2005. No, they're not. It says nothing about follow-up. That's when data were collected, but that doesn't mean people were being followed. The design of this study is clearly, if you read it enough, it's let's assemble a group of cases and those have MS. Let's assemble a group of non-cases. And that's another way of saying controls. And we are going to ask them about their history of full-term pregnancies. In other words, how many full-term pregnancies did you have? Now, we know that full-term pregnancies protect against breast cancer, but do they protect against multiple sclerosis? This study is trying to get at that. And always ask yourself, when you read these, what is the hypothesis? The hypothesis here is that pregnancies may affect your risk of multiple sclerosis, but it's doing it in a case control design. Start with the disease, ask about the past and compare. Now, what if you find out that women with multiple sclerosis had more? They had four on average full-term pregnancies, while people without MS had less? You'd have to conclude that having pregnancies was bad, was not protective, but actually may have caused, may actually cause MS. What if you found the opposite? What if you found control women had a much higher number of previous pregnancies, full-term pregnancies than case women? You'd conclude the opposite. You would conclude that MS, I'm sorry. You would conclude that pregnancies were protective against MS. So you make conclusions similar to a cohort study, but this is clearly a backwards directionality. Think about Kleinbaum again. Backwards directionality. I want you to see that. So let me ask, let me see if there's a question here. What happens if a control then becomes a case? Does the original case get? Yeah, these are, these are studies where, you know, I don't know why that slide changed by itself, but yeah. Yeah, if you're doing like a rate type of case control, and in most case control studies, it simply doesn't happen. But during the period of, where you're collecting data, if a, if a control becomes a case, you would, that, there are different ways of handling it. Sometimes there are control for X amount of time and there are case for an X amount of time. So there are different ways that, you know, it becomes very sophisticated statistically to know exactly how you're going to treat that, you know, if you're doing incidence density sampling. To be honest, you're not going to have to worry about that in most cases. And case control studies normally don't have that problem, fortunately. But if it does happen, it happens very infrequently. And like I said, it, the way I've seen it done, I've never, and none of the case control studies I've worked on has it ever actually happened because I work on, you know, with cancer mostly, and it just doesn't happen. Or it hasn't happened to me. But I've seen them treated as control for X amount of time and as case for X amount of time. So it's, but there, like I said, there are different ways of doing it. And I don't have the one, one single answer for, for that. For nested case control, does one estimate an odds ratio or relative risk? Yeah, well, you're actually, you're actually computing an odds ratio. We haven't talked about odds ratios yet, but it's a good question. You, you actually calculate an odds ratio. But the odds ratio has a lot of meaning and it estimates, you know, we talk about the odds ratio as an estimate of the relative risk. You know, the odds ratio itself has meaning. And people sometimes say, well, I'm not estimating the relative risk. I'm estimating the odds ratio. I'm calculating and estimating the odds ratio. But for most cases, the odds ratio is an estimate of relative risk and is a scene as such. That's why when you're reading a case control study and you get to the discussion section and you're very confused because suddenly they're talking about risk while they calculated an odds ratio. But now they're talking about our data show the risk of this is increased among. Well, they're doing that because they're assuming, they're making the assumption that the odds ratio estimates the risk ratio, which is a reasonable assumption if there's no bias like selection bias or recall bias. It's a reasonable assumption and the assumption depends on something called a rare disease. Because the more common the disease is in the population you're looking at, the odds ratio starts to increase over the, over the risk ratio. Odds ratio starts to increase. So there's an old wisdom that can be challenged, I guess, but anything more than 10% of, of, of disease. So there's an old wisdom that can be challenged, I guess, but anything more than 10% of disease occurrence in a population, the odds ratio starts to be an overestimate of the relative risk. Slowly at first, but it can, it can get multiple times higher if it's a very, very common disease. So technically speaking, you're calculating an odds ratio, but you can still report it as a, in terms of risk and risk, because that's more intuitive, and again, you need to make the assumption that you are estimating the relative risk, but you're actually calculating an odds ratio. And it's important to state that and not confuse your reader by starting to talk about risks when you calculate an odds ratio. You can talk about it, but it should be clear that you calculated an odds ratio. That would be like a crossover study from Helen. I'm not sure what that question means. A crossover study, when, the way I've used them in clinical trials is, it's only in clinical trials when I use it, and we use it as opposed to a parallel clinical trial, where people sort of get one, one treatment or one exposure, and then there's a washout period, and then they get another, and the groups switch. So you start, group number one gets this, and group number one gets that, and then they switch. And you're really comparing, not the groups to each other, but you're comparing what happened to the people who first took this drug, and then they switched to that drug. So that's a, that's the crossover trials that I've done. So I'm not sure if I, if I see that in the context of a case control study. What about in nested case control studies? Well, Melissa, I'm assuming that you're asking if it's, if you're still calculating relative risk when you're calculating an odds ratio, even in a nested case control study, it could still be a rare disease or not a rare disease. You know, you still have to worry about the things that you, you know, does my odds ratio estimate my relative risk? Did I choose my controls in a fair way? Is it a large enough sample to be, you know, that it's not likely to be, by chance, way off the mark of what the relative risk would be? So even in a nested case control, you can still have an odds ratio that doesn't estimate correctly what the risk ratio would have done if you actually calculated it. And Maria says, in this case, the key words should be MS cases, healthy group controls, and match. Yeah. Remember that when I take things from the literature, I don't, I don't doctor them in any way, because I don't want you to know and be able to understand my literature, you know, the, only the papers that I publish. I want you to be able to read and interpret things that are written by actual investigators out there. So yeah, I, look, there are many of these, of these abstracts that I would have worded a little differently, but I don't want to make it so clean that, that you're not used to the fact that things are worded imprecisely sometimes, even in abstracts. And of course, the better journals are more, generally speaking, they are, you know, they go to more effort to make sure everything's clear. So this was a case control study. I hope that was clear to you. We'll talk a little bit about, so that was case control studies. I don't know why that slide is there, but that was case control studies. Now we'll talk a little about cross-sectional studies. They're prevalent studies, a cross-sectional study. All measurements of exposure and outcome are made simultaneously, a slice of time, a slice of time. For example, how many people, I mean, if we're looking at this group of people, and I were to ask you all, how many of you have, are hungry right now? What is the prevalence of hunger? It's not saying when you started getting hungry, it's just, are you hungry now? And I got a percentage of people, and I said, okay, 30% of this group is hungry. That is prevalence. It's not incidence, never said when you got hungry. It is prevalence. So we have 30% of people hungry now, maybe we should take a lunch break. Well, we're not going to, but that's what I'm saying, it's a service-oriented measure. So, you know, do we need to, do we need to do anything about this? You know, 30% of people are hungry. And that's what we mean right now. 30% of people are hungry right now. That's the prevalence right now. What if I ask you an hour from now? It's not necessarily going to be that. So it's different slices of time. So I can also look, I can compare prevalence. What's the prevalence of hunger in this group compared to the prevalence of hunger in the group that started at 8:00 in the morning? And we can learn something from that. Maybe the group that started at 8:00 in the morning is more hungry, more, more prevalence of hunger, and maybe there's more prevalence in this group. So we can learn something through prevalence, but it's not, it's not the same as incidence when it comes to understanding etiology. And I'll give you an example. This cross-sectional study. Let's say we did a cross-sectional study of people with ulcer, and people, you know, we, we assessed, this is, this is the approach in a, in a cross-sectional. Who here has ulcer? Let's determine who has ulcer in this group. Let's say we have 1,000 people. Who has ulcer in this group? And now let's determine who's been eating spicy food? Who's eating spicy, actually, not who, who is eating spicy? What are people eating right now? And let's say we found out, we did this study, and we found out that people with ulcer are less, less likely to eat spicy food. We might say, oh, wow, you know, eating spicy food is good for you. It prevents ulcer. The problem is what? I'm sure this is simple, simple stuff to you, but what is the problem in a cross-sectional study like this? Well, the problem is, what about the people who stopped eating spicy food because they had hunger? Uh-oh, sorry, wrong example. Because they had an ulcer. Okay. Well, you can't rule that out. In a, in a cross-sectional study, you can't rule that out. And that's the beauty of the other study designs, especially the cohort. This study cannot rule out which came first, the exposure or the outcome. And that's a big problem. And what do you think, if I were to give you a question right now, a quiz, what is the directionality of a cross-sectional study? Remember, we talked about the cohort, it's a forward directionality. Remember, we talked about the case control, it's a backwards directionality. What is the directionality of a cross-sectional study? I'm going to give you 10 seconds to think about it, and then I'm going to tell you the The answer is, there is no directionality. There's no directionality. It's a slice of time. You're not looking forward in a group of people who are exposed, looking for an outcome. You're not assembling a group of people with the outcome and really probing, especially new cases. I mean, incident cases in a case control study are the best, because they haven't had time to change their behavior, and we're, and you're looking back at their past exposures. That's backwards direction. This cross-sectional study, think of what a cross-section is. If you're a biologist, it's a, it's a slice of tissue, right? Cross-section, a slice of time, no directionality. So remember that. If you're looking at disease, and I'm giving you a, a quiz later on study design, no directionality. Cross-sectional study, no directionality. So we're gathering data on exposure and outcome at the same time, time zero. And then we're just tabulating, we're just tabulating the data. Now causality, Jamie asked a question. How about causality? Can you use cross-sectional studies for this? Generally speaking, no. Generally speaking, no. Sometimes you can, but very often, you're left with that question, that nagging, because, you know, if you look at the causality, which we're going to talk about later, one of the main things about causality is temporality. Did, are, are we sure that the exposure preceded or came before the outcome? This design often leaves us questioning that. Sure, there are some cases in a cross-sectional study where you can get away a little bit with that temporality issue. What if you're looking at some genetic mutation that occurs, you know, at conception, something like a polymorphism, a germline polymorphism, you're born with it. Then you have less trouble in a, in a cross, but for most things, think about it. Diet and exercise and weight, you know, which came first? Which came first? I've seen this recently. Somebody did a cross-sectional study and said overweight people are less likely to exercise. You know, so if you're, if you're overweight, you're not likely, but they made it sound like that, that, you know, being overweight is what caused you not to exercise. And, and somebody criticized them for the, for the fact that it was a cross-sectional study, and, and they did have, you know, they have no directionality here, and what do you think the criticism was? The criticism was, why, why was getting obese the reason why people didn't exercise? Couldn't it have been that people who don't exercise gain weight? And that's a perfect example. This is a, a study that's been submitted for publication, and the criticism was, you know, you don't have a directionality here. This is a cross-sectional study. So you can't say the obesity came first and led to not exercising. You can't even say that not exercising led to, you really can't say. So causality becomes trouble with a cross-sectional study. It becomes trouble. For rare, rare outcomes don't matter, to answer your question, Jamie. It really doesn't matter in this case, it just makes, for rare outcome, you're just going to have a smaller sample size. It's not going to change anything. You don't run into the same question that you do with a, with a case control study like this. This is, you have bigger fish to fry, you have bigger issues to worry about. For example, is, which came first, the exposure or the outcome? Which is, which way is the causal arrow pointing? I mean, those things are really cause you concern with the cross-sectional study design. Ecological study. Wow, that's a tough one. Well, it's not tough, but now we're getting into something that goes beyond directionality. So there are actually two things that I would tell a student to think about with study design. One, directionality, as you know. Two is unit of analysis. Unit of analysis, what do I mean by that? Well, every study that we looked at up till now, the unit of analysis, or you can think of whatever term you want to use, that who are we looking at? What, what, who are we actually looking at when we get these data? They've been people. Up till now, every one of the studies we talked about have been actual people. But with an ecological study, the people, individuals are not counted specifically. They're not linked, exposure and outcome. Let me give you an example. This is an example from Michael Hill, who was previously editor of the European Journal of Cancer Prevention. And he did an ecological study where he showed a graph, and you know, I think I might have it here, so I'm going to skip ahead. Hold on. Oh, the ecological, this slide is a little bit out of place again. So I'm going to give you the quiz first. Let's, let's go back and talk about the, the cross-sectional study. So here is a quiz. What kind of study is this? Is it a case control study? Is it a cohort study? Is it experimental clinical trial? Or is it a cross-sectional study? Think about the directionality. 200 children aged nine to 12 were recruited to evaluate the effect of body mass on foot structure. In addition to BMI, which is measure of body weight, relative body weight, three reliable anthropologic measures, anthropometric measures were recorded. Foot length, forefoot width, and navicular height. Those are measures of the foot. So what is the effect, the hypothesis, the first thing to think about, what's the hypothesis? Well, does body mass have an effect on foot structure? In other words, are you more, if you're overweight, are you more likely to have flat feet? What type of study design is this? Is there a forward directionality here? Is there a backward directionality here? I don't see either one. I do not see either one. This is a cross-sectional study, because it's a slice of time. They're looking at, at one point in time, they're looking at the, the feet and the body weight. Is it possible that the feet problems led to body weight problems? Yes. Is it possible that body weight problems led to the feet problem? Yes. Can you be sure which way the direction, the causal arrow points here? No. It's a cross-sectional study. Do you see, and you can post something if you do, do you see any directionality here? I do not. So the timeline on a cross-sectional study is simply, we identify a population, at one point in time, we slice that population in terms of a slice of time, we ask about exposure and disease together at one point in time, and then we analyze our data. That is our timeline. So this is a cross-sectional study design. Thank you very much for the person who submitted that answer. It is absolutely correct. I am going to show you the answer, just for the heck of it. It's a cross-sectional study. And now we can talk about ecological studies. And sometimes they're called correlational studies, unfortunately. I prefer ecological study. But anyway. Measures that represent characteristics of the entire population are used to describe disease in relation to some factor of interest. Now, what does that mean? Okay, now we're going to get to Michael Hill, and I'm going to skip ahead if I have to. Yeah, all right, Michael Hill. He looked at cancer rates by country, by country, okay? By country, compared with intake of omega-3 fatty acids by country. So how do you do a cancer rate by country? Well, it's easy. They're published. You know, Japan, overall, in Japan, it's X per 100,000. In the United States, it's Y per 100,000. In North Korea, it's, well, who knows? North Korea, bad example. Okay, but the point is, is that these represent different countries, their national average cancer rates. Now, how do we get omega-3 fatty acid intake by country? Okay. By country, you can do it in a number of ways, if you're not looking at individuals, and that's the distinction with an ecological study, you're not getting individual level data. Well, you could look at how much, well, what are the sources of omega-3 fatty acid? Well, one of the biggest sources for the long chain, I, you know, I'm not a nutrition expert, but the long-chain fat omega-3s are, come mostly from fatty fish. So you could look at average per capita, have you ever heard of the term per capita? The average sales of fatty fish in country A versus country B. And you can get an overall estimate for that country. So what's the unit of analysis? Remember I said unit of analysis? Unit of analysis is not individuals anymore. Let me go back a second. Let me go back a second. What is the unit of analysis here? Read the first line. It's nine, it's 200 children aged nine to 12 years. Individuals. Individuals are the unit of analysis. That's what makes it a cross-sectional study. In a way, this is a cross-sectional study too, this ecological study. But what, why do we not call it a cross-sectional study? Why do we not call it a cross-sectional study? Because the unit of analysis is not individuals, okay? USA, Japan, for example. And by the way, Japan does have higher intake of fish, fatty fish, than we do. And they have a lower cancer rate. So what do you think Michael Hill was testing? He was testing, does consumption of omega-3 fatty acids, particularly the long chain, lower the risk of cancer, or lower the rate of cancer in people who consume more fish? The problem with the ecological study is what? You're not looking at individuals, you're looking at countries, or you're looking at counties, or you're looking at states, you're not looking at individuals. So like the cross-sectional study, this has no directionality. There is no, you don't see a directionality here. We're not going forward, we're not going back. It's a slice of time. Right now, the USA has higher rates of, of cancer and lower intake of omega-3 fatty acid. But why is it not a cross-sectional study? This is the, maybe the biggest challenge for students who are trying to make sure you understand different study design, is because the unit of analysis is not individuals, it is averages. It is averages by group, okay? So you get some sort of correlation here, and that's why they might call it a correlational study. But it's by group, and here's the problem. This is really descriptive. This is really descriptive. You cannot establish a causal relation. You cannot establish a causal relationship. Let me give you another example. It's not a slide, but let me give you another example. Somebody tried to publish this a few years ago. Did you know that the further north you go from the equator, like, you know, Mexico, then United States, then Canada, you know, Sweden, Spain, uh, north Sweden, the further north you go, the more disease, you have certain types of chronic disease like breast cancer and multiple sclerosis. So the average rate in countries for these diseases get higher the further north you go. What's the hypothesis? What was this guy's hypothesis? It was that exposure to sunlight is protective. Vitamin D or anything else. Probably vitamin D was his hypothesis. The further north you go, the less sunlight you get, on average, on average, important. And the more you're at risk for diseases that are protected by vitamin D, like certain types of cancer, multiple sclerosis. Now, why do you think they had trouble? The editors had trouble with this. Because it was on a group, it was national. You don't even know within any of these countries whether the people who got the disease got the sun. You can't put individual data together. So what could also be happening is you get further north. It may not be the sunlight. It may be better record keeping. It may be better, uh, understanding of who had cancer and who didn't. Maybe Mexico doesn't have a, you know, a lot of deaths are not recorded. I mean, there's other reasons. It could be the further north you get, the less sunlight there is to grow vegetables, and the less vegetables you eat. It may have nothing to do with vitamin D, it may have nothing to do with sunlight even. That's the problem with an ecological study. And that's what's called the ecological fallacy. You're unable, look at the third point. Unable to link exposure with disease in a particular individual. It's not on an individual level. So directionality, unit of analysis. That'll get you all the study designs for at least the ones that I'm showing you now. So two of these designs have no directionality, ecological and cross-sectional. How do you distinguish? The unit of analysis, is it individuals or is it group averages? Okay? So let's go ahead. And, uh, okay, we've looked at this. And I, now you're going to have to take another quiz. I'm so sorry, but let's see if you, how you do. During the period 1995 to 2000, 81,132 lung cancer cases were reported in Texas. Researchers examined the association of metal air releases with the average annual age-adjusted primary and non-small cell lung cancer rates in the 254 Texas counties. Now, just read it for a second. Maybe I didn't read it well. So read it for one second. Now, I'll give you a clue. It's not a cohort study because there's no follow-up. And that, of course, is there's no experiment. It's not a clinical trial. There's no backward, there's no assembling of cases and controls and looking back in time. There's no backwards directionality. It's not a case control study. So it's either a cross-sectional study, because it's got no directionality, or it's an ecological study. So you have to think about the unit of analysis. Now, I tried to fool you, well, I didn't try to fool you, I pulled this from the literature, but you might think it's individuals because it says 81,132 cases. That doesn't mean that the data are linked individually. So let's look at it again. Researchers examined the association of metal air releases. So how much metal was released in your county compared to someone else's county? And the overall, overall lung cancer rates by county. Does that sound individual to you? Or does that sound like an average over a group of people? It is the second one, to be honest. It is the second one. It is, it is an average over a group of people. I, I, uh, I don't want to confuse you, but this is not a cross-sectional study. Remember the one where we talked about nine and 12-year-olds and they actually looked at those feet, those nine and 12-year-old feet compared to the nine and 12-year-old body weight? This is not that. This is done on average. This is an ecological, correct, ecological. Unit of analysis and directionality. It won't solve all your problems with study design, but it'll solve 99% of them. Okay. What type of study is this? And I tried to, well, I picked one that might fool you, so tell me what you think this is. Um, I'll let you read it. Okay, now I'm going to read it to you. A survey was performed in nine European counties. See, I'm already trying to fool you. Because you're already thinking, this must be averages, right? By country, Austria, Belgium, Denmark, Iceland, Netherlands, Norway, Portugal, Spain, and Sweden. But I may have fooled you. Just kidding, because a study is conducted in several countries doesn't mean it's not individual. I could do a clinical trial right now, and I can include Canadians and Americans, that does not make it an ecological study. You've got to ask where the data is. What is it, what, what's the unit of data, you know, for analysis, what's the unit of analysis for the data? So let's see now. It was done in different countries, but data on usual intake of fruit and vegetables and related correlates, meaning other variables, were collected by means of a self-administered questionnaire. By the way, what's a self-administered, it means that you, you fill out the questionnaire yourself among 11-year-old schoolchildren. So the first part of this may, may have led you down the wrong path. It's not an ecological study. Where are the data coming from? Where are the data coming from? They're coming from 11-year-old schoolchildren who are filling out personal questionnaires. It cannot be an ecological study. It is a cross-sectional study. If anyone has a question about that, I'm happy to explain. I'm happy to explain why this is a cross-sectional. Let me know if you have a question. The point is, is I threw in the countries, well, actually, the author picked one where they had done this in different countries. That doesn't make it, it's not the country, it's the unit of analysis. Is the country average the, the, the unit of analysis, or is it the people within the country? If it's the people within the country, if it's 11-year-old schoolchildren, it's a cross-sectional study. If it's average of Spain, Portugal, then it's an ecological study. All right, so I'm assuming that, as difficult as that may seem, that you will be able to look these things over later, and let me know if you have any questions. Question from Molly. If the researchers used the surveys to assess national averages, then it would be ecological, but I can't imagine somebody using individual surveys and not later using that individual data. But yes, if national surveys are used and the data are reported and analyzed as a national average, it would have to be ecological, because you're analyzing it as an ecological study. Does that make sense? It becomes an ecological by the way you analyze it. Okay? So a question from, uh, Depu Ju. Yeah, it's not a question, it's a, it's a snapshot of the population. Both of those designs are non-directional, they're both snapshots. If we're children of all ages, Bianca, it would still be a cross-sectional because it would be individuals. The minute you, the minute you have, the minute your analysis becomes averages, you're not dealing with people anymore. I mean, you're dealing with people, but you're not, you're not linking individual like, like you, like Bianca, your information on exposure and outcome is lost in the average. Does that make sense to you? So it's, it doesn't matter if it's 11-year-old children, or as long as you're getting individual data, that's what counts. So, okay. Measures of association. Uh, we're going to try to go a little quicker, because, uh, wow, it's 320. You guys are so good with the questions that, um, I've been going slower than I normally go. Measures of association, although we have a head start, are risk ratio and rate ratio. Uh, remember we said with a cohort study, you're going to have a risk or a rate in the exposed group, like smokers? And a risk or a rate in the non-exposed group? Well, you take the ratio. And guess what it is if there's no association? Guess what it is if there's, well, you already know, if they're equal, if the rates or risks are equal in both groups, the ratio is going to be one. And that's what's called the null value. Risk ratio or odds ratio of one means there's no association. Because the, the rates or the risks, or in the case of a case control, the odds are the same. Doesn't matter. If the odds are the same, or the risks are the same, it means the exposure doesn't make a difference. If it's above one, the exposure increased risk of disease. If the odds ratio or the risk ratio below one, it implies that the exposure lowers your risk or rate of disease. So, um, moving a little quicker. Relative risk is a term that sometimes substitutes for, uh, risk ratio. Relative risk means risk ratio. Although sometimes it's used more generally, like somebody could be doing a rate ratio and they say relative risk. Well, fine. I mean, that's the way people talk sometime, but it's really referring to a risk ratio. Let me ask a quick question by George about the previous one. Um, he's talking about the previous example, I'm sorry, I just want to get this question out of the way. Why did the nine European countries have been selected for data gathering? Well, that's something that you'd have to read the study. Why did they choose Spain? Well, you know, why did they choose those particular countries? Because those particularly countries, either the researchers in those countries decided to do this, or that's where the data were most easily obtained, or they stopped when they got a large enough sample size, or they stopped when they ran out of money. Any one of those reasons could be. So what's a risk ratio of 10 mean? What's a risk ratio of 10 mean? It means that the exposure increased your risk tenfold. The exposure increased your risk tenfold. What does a risk ratio of 0.5 mean? 0.5. It means the exposure cut your risk in half. The exposure cut your risk in half. So where's the dividing line between something being harmful and something being protective? 1.0. 1.0, that's the null. That means there's no association. Anything above that, there's a positive association. Anything below that, there's a negative or inverse association. In this example, which I'm not going to waste your time too much calculating for you now, but it's here for you. You look at, now, which way do you go? If this is a cohort study? Do you start with the disease people and assess exposure? No. You start with the exposed. So how many people are exposed? Because you need a denominator. Ah, how many people are exposed? You don't see the number here, do you? Well, it's not there. Because there's 74 people who are exposed, aren't there? I've divided them into 24 got the disease and 50 didn't. You need to know what the denominator is. What's the numerator? What is the numerator? If we're getting a risk? 24, remember? Number of new cases of disease divided by the total. So that's where we get 24 divided by 74. It's the number of new cases, 24, divided by the total. And we did the same in non-exposed, and we took the ratio, and we got a risk ratio. And it was 1.23. So you know it's above one. You know that it's a slight increase in risk. In fact, it's 23% increased risk due to exposure. Not a lot. Where would you say a small increase of risk would lie? A small increase of risk, I mean, anything between 0.9 and 1.1 is almost considered no association, because it's very hard to rule out or rule in an association when they're that close to 1.0. But 1.2 to 1.5 might be considered a small, or 1.4 might be considered as kind of small or weak association. Still important, but that might be, anything from, let's say, 1.5 to 2.5 might be considered a moderate association. And maybe above 2.5 or something, I mean, uh, it's arbitrary, but, uh, that's maybe considered a large, a strong association. I've seen it go up to 40. So, um, reflux and esophageal cancer goes up to 40. So, uh, 1.23 is not very large, but it's, it's not, it's not null. So there's something there. All right, okay, so let me, uh, figure out which way my arrows are pointing. So this tells you the null hypothesis. Uh, your hypothesis could be that there is an association. You know, it could be any direction. This is how you'd state that. The risk ratio is not equal to one. That's my, that's my hypothesis. One-sided hypothesis, I'm not going to get into biostatistics, but normally you don't do it. It's, it's, it's not as, as, uh, conservative as, it's just not, it's not the way to frame hypothesis that, that smoking increases the risk. I hypothesize that smoking alters the risk a bit better. Because smoking does lower the risk of some cancers, like endometrial cancer. So if you only hypothesize one direction, you're statistically running into trouble if it goes the other way. So just a point of, just another point. This is for you to look at later. It should tell you what, for example, a risk ratio of 1.5 means 50% increased risk. It tells you how to get at that. A risk ratio of three, three times as much risk. A risk ratio of 10, 10 times as much risk in the exposed. A risk ratio of 40, 40 times more increased risk. And this tells you how to, how to look at that percent when it's below 1.0. It's 1.0 minus the risk ratio. So if the risk ratio is 0.75, you, 1.0 minus 7, so 25% less risk of outcome. So this just gives you a guide. We're not getting into that, um, confidence intervals. We don't have time for that. But that just tells you something of the precision of your estimate. Don't worry about that now. That's, that's something for you and Gordis, when you get Gordis' book for $4.83 on Amazon. Rate ratio is like a risk ratio, except you're dealing with rates and not risks. And, uh, well, I just made one for you. You know, you have a rate of 50, whatever, whatever the units are, 50, uh, disease per 10-person years divided by 20 disease per 10, per, uh, person years. You know, the person years can't cancel out when you divide, so that's why I didn't put them in here. But the slide could have been improved perhaps by putting in the person years and then showing you that you, that they cancel out. Analysis of a case control study. Let me get to a question by George. How is this ratio scoped? Well, I'm not sure what the question is, but 1.23 risk ratio, George, you would minus off one, the 1.0 and say that there's 23% increased risk in the exposed group. So if you, if it's smoking and thyroid cancer and your exposure is smoking, you would say with a relative risk of 1.23, that smoking increases the risk of thyroid cancer by 23%. But that, I would say, is weak. I would not say that that's an even medium, I'd say that's weak association. Doesn't mean it's false, but it's weak. Odds ratios, well, um, odds ratios are, the odds is a measure that you use in a case control study. Instead of the risk, which is a forward directionality kind of measure, you're saying, what's the odds that this case was exposed to sunlight versus the odds that the non-case, the control was, was exposed to sunlight? And that's where you get that odds ratio. It's the odds of the exposure in the cases divided by the odds of the exposure in the controls. And that estimates the risk ratio. Yay! Remember? If you don't have bias and the disease is rare, it's an estimate of the risk ratio. So we take a measure that's less intuitive, and it, and it estimates a measure that's more intuitive. Because you often don't think of your personal odds of exposure. You think of your personal risk of disease, don't you? You don't go into a doctor and say, what's my odds of exposure? No. You say, what's my risk of disease? I've been smoking for the past 50 years. So we think in terms of risk. The odds ratio is less intuitive, but it estimates the relative risk. So it's something to think about. Don't worry about the statistics, we don't have time right now. Here's an example of how you calculate an odds ratio. But, let's see if I showed you the cross-products. No, I didn't. Great. So I did it the old-fashioned way, and you'll see later that you can use cross-products. What is the odds of smoking among cases? So look at the cases, it's the left column. The odds of smoking is simply the number who smoked divided by the number who didn't smoke. Think about horse racing. Yes, 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 Lucas, all the Yes, 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 Lucas, all the slides will be available. The odds of exposure is 112 to 88. 112 to 88. Sounds like horse racing, and it is, sort of. But you can take the, the ratio itself, 1.27. And what is the odds of smoking among controls? Well, it's 0.79. Do you think you're going to have a positive odds ratio? You certainly are. Because 1.27 divided by 0.79 is, and I'm going the wrong way again, thank you, 1.61. And if you put it in terms of a risk ratio, let's put it in terms of an odds ratio first. The case's odds of exposure is 1.6 times that of controls. Now let's put it in terms of a cohort study. The risk of the outcome is 1.6 times higher in the exposed than the unexposed. Do you see how the terminology changes? And yet if the odds ratio estimates the risk ratio, you're going to see people suddenly talking about risk in a study that's really a case control study. And that's okay. The simpler calculation for an odds ratio is the cross products. 112 times 224 divided by 88 times 176. You see, you get the same answer, 1.61. Okay. Same, same way. If the odds ratio is less than one, it's inverse. If the odds ratio is greater than one, it's, it's positive association with exposure and disease. And if it's equal one, there's no association. So we just went over the interpretation. We just did it both ways, so this slide is covered. See, I've said this already a few times, but let me read it again quickly. Odds ratio can be used to estimate the relative risk when in the case controls, in the case control study, when cases are representative. In other words, you don't have major bias of selection and controls are representative of the study population and the disease is rare. So you select it carefully and your disease is rare. Your odds ratio will estimate your risk ratio. Do not worry about this for now. This tells you why the rare disease is important. If there's one slide in this whole talk that you can do without, it's this one. Just assume that a very rare disease, you don't have to worry about, the rare disease assumption is met, anything less than 10%. 10% prevalence or occurrence in the population. Match designs are not used very much anymore, so I don't think you need to worry about this. This actually, you know, I'm going to take executive liberties and tell you that you don't need to worry too much about the match design. Instead of AD divided by BC, it's now just B over C. You're looking at discordant pairs only. Don't worry about it. It's called the McNamara odds ratio. Don't worry about it. That's my message for you right now. Not the time to worry about it. And there's an example of it if you want to worry about it later. Measures of impact. Okay. We were talking about measures of association. Let me answer this question. I think you will have access via Keya to the audio of this webinar. And you can hear all my silly mistakes and, you know, saying one thing when I meant another. But fortunately, I usually corrected myself, so, or I always corrected myself. So it should be available. So the risk ratio and odds ratio measure the strength of the association, but how much of the disease can be attributed to the exposure? How much of the coronary heart disease risk, for example, experienced by smokers can be attributed to smoking? Well, that's an issue that you really find a lot of good material on David Kleinbaum's Act of Epi, because he talks about that. He gives nice examples. And you know what? The attributable risk in this case is very simple. Instead of risk in the exposed divided by the risk in the unexposed, it's the risk in the exposed minus the risk in the unexposed. That's the risk difference. And forget about all the statistics and just focus your eyes on this picture. Okay? And look at the exposed group. Let's say they're smokers. How much of their, and they have a certain risk. Let's say smokers have a certain risk of lung cancer. And your question is, how much of their risk is due to smoking? Can you assume that all of their risk is due to smoking? Do only smokers get lung cancer? No, they don't. So how do you know how much is, is due to lung cancer? How much of this risk is due to smoking? I'm sorry. How much of this risk is due to smoking? So what are we doing here? What happens when we subtract the risk in the exposed minus the risk in the unexposed? What are we taking away? We're taking away the background, the risks that we have even if we don't smoke. And what are we left with? What are we left with? Excess risk. Do you see that? Do you see that? This picture should be in your head. If you forget every formula, if you forget every definition, this is such a clear picture to me. It is such a clear picture to me. If you take away the background risk, and who represents the background risk? Who represents the background? You're right, the unexposed group. So if you take that away, if you take away their risk, you're left with the excess. That excess is the risk difference or the attributable risk. That's the risk attributable to smoking. You can't assume it's all due to smoking. You have to first take away the risk in the unexposed. Okay. So we have a question from Hollis, and basically, the presentation went too fast, and I'm sorry about that. I was so enjoying the first part of the presentation that I have to go through this part a little quicker. But there's two things I would say, Hollis, three things. Well, let me start with one thing. First thing is, this will be available for you to watch 100 times if you want to. And the slides will be available to go through at one per hour if you want to. And finally, I'm available to answer your questions if you do have any. No matter when you get them, you could always email me. So that's the only thing I can say and apologize for going fast now. Somebody said, does bias affect measure of impact? That is a great question. The fact is that, let's say you recorded exposure, let's say you had misclassification of exposure, so that your rate in the exposed has unexposed people in it, or risk, and your risk in the unexposed has some exposed people in it. Your risk difference will be smaller than it really should, wouldn't it? So yeah, measurement error and other error can absolutely affect measures of, these absolute measures as well as the relative measures. These absolute measures being risk difference, for example. Absolutely. Good question, but yeah. Yeah. Imagine somebody giving you wrong answers. Imagine someone lying about their smoking. I mean, it's going to affect everything, every measure. That was a good question. So the incidence not due to exposure, if you take that away, you're left with the excess. Incidence due to exposure. Background risk. Excess risk. So that picture, that picture tells you what's going on. Now, what's the difference between relative measures? Remember we took relative risks and said something was X number of times more, risk was 10 times higher in exposed? Because Jamie asked, what's absolute measures? Well, these are called public health measures. Maybe I shouldn't use the word absolute. Because it's not relative. It's not, it's not saying 10 times more. It's saying the actual amount of excess risk. That's why it's called absoluter or public health measures, while the others are etiologic measures. I shouldn't spend too much time on this because, to be honest, 100% of what I do, or 99.9% of what I do, is the relative measures. The odds ratios, the risk ratios, the rate ratios. Only in one paper I've ever dealt with this specifically. It's important to note, but it's also important to understand that it's not used very much in etiologic research. But there's an example here. You can look at the risk difference. The proportion is just the proportion of the excess to the total. So this fancy, this fancy thing is just, what's, what's the excess divided by the total? You can see if it's 90% or it's 10%. Risk differences is, and, and risk etiologic fraction are the two main measures of, they're called public health measures. Or, you know, for example, you might say, okay, 90% of the risk in smokers is due to their smoking. Therefore, by not smoking, you eliminate 90% of your risk. It's not saying how strong the relationship is with smoking and lung cancer. It's telling you what percentage of your risk is due to it. Are they related? Yes, but they're different measures. So that's something I would look at in Gordis, for example. Is look at the difference between the etiologic measures, like odds ratio, risk ratio, rate ratio, and compare them to, you know, these public health, or what's sometimes called public health. And I'm going to skip this part and give you a short break, because I know you've been very patient with me. And I'm hoping, I'm actually hoping we could take a five-minute break, but I'll leave that up to the, to you, of course, and I'll leave that up to the moderators of this talk. But five-minute break would be preferable, because I have a little more to go over in a short amount of time. Okay, dear, dear fans and colleagues, are you, hopefully you're back. Mandy, for your question, the slides will be on the website and you'll have access to them and you'll have access to me, my address. You can write to me at, well, it should be on there, but pdterry@utk.edu. If you have any questions about the slides, anybody can do so. So let's, let's just go through what we can in the time we have. The slides will be available. I'm glad I was able to talk more than I usually do with you about some of the concepts like the study design and the quiz. And I wish I had you for another three hours. I know, I know that you might not want to, but I would love to have you for another three hours. But we're going to have to move quickly. We're not going to get through everything. But you'll have access to everything, and I want you to contact me if you have any questions about the slides at all. We could talk on phone, we could talk on email, it's fine. Really doesn't matter to me. I always like to talk about epidemiology, especially if I learn something, which I almost always do. So don't hesitate to call me or email me. So let's go to causal inference a little bit. And, well, these slides I'm not going to dwell on either. It dates back to infectious disease epidemiology and understanding that as environments change, I mean, environments support vectors which take agents and infect hosts. And for example, if you get rid of a swamp, you get rid of the mosquitoes, which is the vector. So you get rid of a swamp, which is the environment, and you get rid of the mosquitoes. Of course, the mosquitoes are the ones that hold the agent, the malaria agent, and then the host won't get affected. So I tend to, you know, we're talking about malaria here, if you didn't notice this slide. It just makes sure that you understand that there are the levels of the environment, the agent, the vector, and the host. Mainly infectious disease epidemiology and less, less dwelled on than today, but still important to know. So Sir Austin Hill, now there's, there's an article from 1965. Austin Bradford Hill. His middle name was Bradford, and people often call him Austin, you know, Bradford Hill, that's his last name. But his, his name was actually Hill, his last name. But Bradford Hill is often cited as being his last name hyphenated. So look for Austin Bradford Hill, 1965. It's a great article. And it talks about the different criteria for judging causality. And usually you need a group of papers before you can say, for example, that fiber lowers your risk of, of colon cancer. Which, in time, if you look at the, if you look at the data, sometimes it seems that it does, sometimes that it seems that it doesn't. The case control studies used to say that it did, and then the cohort studies said that it didn't. And the proponents of the cohort studies said, well, you know, we don't have this problem of people not being able to recall properly, and ours is right. And then somebody said, no, you're both wrong. You know, you just didn't, you didn't measure it right. You didn't measure it carefully enough. You didn't have enough of a range. You didn't have enough people taking so much fiber. So there's criticisms of every kind of study out there. There is no perfect study. I mean, a perfect study is not possible. If you could go back in time, yeah, you could probably make a perfect study where you gave 100 people something and then went back in time and didn't give them, or gave them something else. Because then you'd be controlling for time period, individuals, you wouldn't have to get a control group who might be different. But you can't do that. There is no perfect study. So when you get a group of studies, you look for the following thing, Hill said. Look, see how strong the association is. Not that a weak association can't be real, but if you have an odds ratio or risk ratio of 40, what kind of bias could explain all that? And usually, the answer is, not a lot. You know, bias can't really explain that. So if you get something, the more strength you see in association, the higher the magnitude, the less likely, not impossible, but the less likely that bias is totally responsible for that. So that's why he said strength of, consistency. If you see the same outcome, yeah, and you do, with smoking and lung cancer. I don't care where the study is conducted. I don't care if it's case control study. I don't care where the study is conducted, I don't care if it's case control study, cross-sectional study, cohort study, it's consistently showing a relationship, that's one clue that there's a causal relationship going on. Specificity doesn't work very well, and, and when you're not dealing with infectious diseases. It's basically saying, would you find HIV, if you don't find the HIV virus in people with AIDS, then maybe there's no relationship. But that doesn't work with smoking or something like that, because a lot of things cause lung cancer, like radon, not just smoking, and smoking causes a lot of things, not just lung cancer. So specificity doesn't work as well in chronic diseases. Temporal always has to be there, always has to be there. Exposure comes first, the outcome comes second. If you can't have that, this is the only one that's essential. Then there's no association. You've got to have a temporal relationship, first the exposure, then the outcome. Biological gradient was his way of saying dose response. For example, the more you smoke, the higher your risk of lung cancer. It goes up with the amount of cigarettes that you smoke. So that's sort of, you know, it's not experimental, but it sort of gives you the impression of more exposure, more risk of disease, and that gives you a clue that there's an association. Is it biologically plausible? Well, with smoking and lung cancer, it is, because we've seen what lung tissue looks like. We've even seen, you know, on a molecular level, the damage to DNA and the resulting tumors that result from that damage. So it's biologically plausible. And then there were some others. Coherency is sort of, you know, does it make sense with what we know about the disease? Experiment, is there any experiments? Is there any experimental evidence? Because that needs to be taken into account. Experiments are a special group of studies. An analogy, that's, he said was very weak, even Bradford Hill said very weak. But if thalidomide during pregnancy can cause birth defects, he reasoned, then something like thalidomide given during pregnancy might be responsible if we're trying to link it with birth defects. Analogy is weak, but it's something that we consider. So those are Hill's criteria. They're not really criteria, except maybe for temporal relationship, number four, but they're things we think about when we think about, given this group of literature, can we really say, as public health officials, as epidemiologists, that now we can say it's causal? It took years, 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 decade or more before they said smoking is bad for you. They looked at a lot of studies, they looked at a lot of evidence, and right around that time, Hill, who was involved in this smoking and disease, decided that, well, these are, these are the things that we discussed, these are the things that we thought about. And everyone, well, you may know that in 1964, the Surgeon General finally came out with a report saying cigarettes smoking is harmful, causes lung cancer. Well, it took a lot of these considerations before they finally did that, because studies don't always agree with each other. Answers are not always clear. Yeah, don't worry about this, this is temporality, don't worry about this either. This is for extra reading, how's that? Same with, you know, reliability and validity and bias, it's things that we talked about, and we need to talk about more. This is minutia that we don't need to worry about. Chance, always, you know, the P-values. Always think about, is this due to chance? Everything can be due to chance. Sometimes it's very unlikely, that's all a P-value tells you. It doesn't tell you if there's bias. How likely is this due to chance? And you're never going to see one that's absolute zero, because there is no, nothing that can't be caused by chance. So be aware of that. And bias, confounding, these are issues that Gordis goes into very well. That's why I recommend that book, and the others that I recommended to you. We talked about external validity, random errors, you know, noise, statistical noise, that's also covered well. Bias, well, this is stuff that's, yeah. Okay. I think the moderator hopefully will, you know, state later where they can get copies of this, because a lot of people are asking. So Aldo, I think the moderator is going to help you with that, or send out a group email, or, or just stay on the line when I'm done, which is five minutes from now, and they may tell you where you can find, I know it's on the website and I've seen it, but the exact address escapes me right now. So yeah, we're going to make all of this available to you, and I'm going to remain available to you. All this is, you know, what I told you before, and what we talked about before is very important. I'm glad we had a chance to go into that, even at the expense of some of this more, you know, smaller things. But bias can come from getting wrong information, so that's information bias. Selection, we talked about leaving a cohort study, or picking the wrong people to come into your case control study. That's a type of bias that you get. So read about this, going through selection bias. Information bias, well, if you don't tell me how much you smoked accurately, or drank, or ate carrots, that's information bias. So that's, and if cases recall more or less than controls, that can run you into bias. So that's why it's called recall bias. So, I don't know how I got through all this last year, and I guess I left people confused by not, by going too fast last year, I guess. Confounding, I mean, you hear confounding all the time. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just end with confounding. I mean, if you, and I'm going to give you a little quiz, almost. What if someone said, I just did a study of coffee drinking, or alcohol drinking, either one, and lung cancer, and I found an association? What would you say? Did you control for what? I just found that coffee drinking, or alcohol drinking, causes lung cancer. Did you control for what? Smoking. If you smoke more because you're drinking a cup of coffee like they used to, it's called a coffee break, or, you know, you're at a bar drinking alcohol, smoking, well, that's what raises your lung cancer risk, not the coffee drinking, not the alcohol drinking. And that's why it's called confounding, because you're confusing two things that are related to each other, and you need to separate them. And that's where the statistical models from today, really, like SAS or SPSS, and they're called multivariate models, and what they do is separate the effects of things that might be related to each other, so that you can distinguish their effects. Now, if you control for smoking, there's no longer any association between coffee drinking and lung cancer. Okay? So these are things to think about with causality, because people don't, you know, when you hear the news, they jump to conclusions, and they say, well, this is causing this. You know, that's where epidemiology really comes into public health. If you're a public health person who's never really cared for epidemiology, or for the methods of epidemiology, well, let me tell you something. This is where it really shines. Because whether you're a health professional who deals with education, well, how are you going to educate people if you don't know how to separate effects that are meaningful and are causal from effects that are spurious, which is a fancy way of saying wrong? Well, that's where epidemiology shines, and that's where these methods that we're talking about come into play. Because a lot of things that have affected your lives, like controversies in the past, like, does aspirin cause Ries syndrome? Most of you are younger than me. Most of you never got aspirin when you were kids, because eventually, that epidemiologic controversy was solved. Most, all of you, especially you women, you're fortifying yourself just every time you eat a bagel with folic acid, because of epidemiology showing eventually, even though it was controversial, that folic acid prevents neural tube defects in babies. So epidemiology affects your life in more ways than you can have any idea. And so we have about 20 seconds left of this webinar, and there are some slides we didn't get to, I'm very sorry about that, but three hours, we got to talk more in depth about some important things. And your questions really helped me do that, so I appreciate that. The organizer of this, the administrator of this webinar will tell you where you can find this, my contact information, again, pdterry@utk.edu, and, and the slides and the presentation are absolutely available to you, absolutely. So I'm done, it's four o'clock. Is the administrator available to tell people about the website?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for participating in the first study session webinar on epidemiology, and thank you to Dr. Paul Terry. I'll be emailing everybody a PDF of this presentation, and if you circle back to the website in about mid to end of January, you'll be able to see this webinar posted there on the website. But in the meantime, I'll be sending it to everybody by email today. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, please feel free to email Paul Terry or info@mbph.org. Thank you and have a great day.